Orange County Schools Board of Education pledges to our families, students, staff, and the greater community to conduct our business in a courteous and productive manner, showing respect for fellow board members, staff, and citizens. The board asks its citizens to conduct themselves with the same courtesy towards all staff members and each other. As per board policy, Robert's Rules of Order will be used to conduct meetings and a moment of silence will be observed before we begin our business. Public comment will be held after the presentation for each agenda item for which a speaker has signed up. Everyone in the auditorium this evening must keep their masks above their noses and under their chins. As we begin our work this evening, I ask that we remember that Orange County Schools was founded on land previously settled by ancestors of the Okanichi Band of the Suponi Nation, and reflect on building authentic community who works honestly and transparently to repair generations of harm between our district and our indigenous community. We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you for that. We will now say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will now pass it to Superintendent Dr. Felder for our recognitions this evening.
Well, thank you Chair McKenzie. Greetings to the Board of Education, to all families and staff and students. Tonight, we have a number of recognitions, and I'm happy to begin with our custodians. So, October 2nd was National Custodians' Day. So, tonight's Health and Safety Spotlight is shining brightly on these very important members of the Orange County Schools team. We want to recognize our 25 custodians who work so hard to keep our schools and facilities sanitary and in tip-top shape every day. We honor them today and every day. October 18th through the 22nd is National School Bus Safety Week. As you know, school buses are carrying very precious cargo, and we want to encourage parents, students, teachers, motorists, school bus operators, and other interested parties to join forces and address the importance of school bus safety. And I would like to take this time to thank our 68 transportation employees for all they do every day to keep our students safe while on our school buses. October 23rd through the 31st is Red Ribbon Week. This is the nation's oldest and largest drug prevention awareness program. It actually started in 1985. Our staff are planning activities to promote the many benefits of being drug-free for our students. School counselors have also have resources for families should they need support with talking to their children about drugs. October 11th through the 15th is National School Lunch Week. We are grateful for our 57 child nutrition staff who prepare more than 14,000 school meals every week for our students. We know how important a healthy nutrition school meals are inside and outside of our classrooms, and we thank them for their dedicated service to our students every day. Not only do our principals have a week in the spring to be celebrated, they also have the entire month of October. We couldn't be more grateful for their leadership and commitment to our students, staff, and families. We look forward to continuing to celebrate and appreciate our principals this month. Indigenous Peoples' Day is celebrated on the second Monday of October, which is today. We want to take time to honor the cultures and histories of Native American people. Today is centered around reflecting on their tribal roots and the tragic stories that hurt but strengthened their communities. I want to extend a very warm welcome and acknowledge that we have members of the Okanichi Band of the Suponi Nation and the Suponi Nation who are with us tonight. They will be formally introduced when the board's Indigenous Peoples' Day resolution is presented. For Chair, that concludes the recognitions for tonight.
Thank you so much, Dr. Felder. With that, do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Move.
Second.
A motion for Mr. Atherton, a second for Ms. Smiley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Our agenda has been adopted. Thank you. The next item is our consent agenda. We have polled, Sarah, Board Member Smiley has asked to poll CNI Program Math 180. Mr. Atherton has asked to poll travel restrictions for staff. Are there any other items that board members would like to pull from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items?
So, move Madam Chair?
Again.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Our consent agenda, the remaining items of the consent agenda have been approved. The next item is CNI programs, specifically Math 180. We will discuss that, and then we have some public speakers. So, we will first have a discussion, then public speakers, then we will vote. Ms. Smiley?
Thank you. So, I believe that Math 180 was a program that we were piloting over the summer during Summer Scholars and got really positive feedback from staff. I have a few different questions, but the first one is what were the student learning outcomes of the Summer Scholars program?
Good evening, Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, Ms. Smiley, Superintendent Felder. Unfortunately, I don't have those specific stats with me right now, but I can definitely present that to you in the Board of State. The teachers that worked with this program and saw the positive experience for the students this summer asked, especially at the middle school levels, to have this as an intervention opportunity for the students. And so, again, while the district is supporting three initiatives, the other supports and resources that schools were seeking, long as they had a plan, we were supporting that. So, our middle schools are actually asked for a couple of the math pilots that we tried this summer, Math 180 being one of them, and then ST Math was the other, that they really appreciated for the middle school students.
I do have a couple of other questions, but I wasn't sure if...
Yeah, absolutely.
So, what, this is, Math 180, I believe, is going to be used for either Tier 2 or Tier 3 instruction, is that right? And then, what curriculum are we using for core instruction in middle school right now?
So, currently, we're using decimals?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure that microphone is on. I can...
That's very difficult.
Okay, I will try to project my voice. So, currently, in the middle school grades, they're using decimals as the math curriculum.
Okay. And in terms of progress monitoring, how are we monitoring student progress for Math 180 and how often? And then, how are we monitoring progress for students receiving core instruction?
So, progress monitoring for core instruction, of course, that's with our decimals as part of their main resource for that. And then, one of the reasons why we're using decimals, because it supports that. I don't have, like, an exact schedule as to every two weeks. You know, that's per school and their data cycle review windows. And so, I can also, you know, get that information for you from the schools, especially the Math 180, because, again, it's cyclical, based on what intervention the students need, and then how they're able to advance through that. So, it can sometimes be a week, sometimes it can be two, based on the need of the student.
Okay. Great, thank you. I, and it may be, and I know we have a conversation coming up about the Student Achievement Committee, and that may be a good place to go deeper into middle school math in particular, but I just wanted to name, you know, I'm happy that we're adding curriculum to support Tier 2 instruction. I am concerned about making sure we're closely monitoring the effectiveness of how we're delivering math instruction in middle school, given our results, and that we are able to change course if things aren't working. So, I'm thinking teachers are asked to, right now, differentiate to a wide range of students, especially because we're no longer separating advanced students in entirely different class, right? So, each teacher has sort of a very wide range of students they're supporting. And I just would like to get into deeper conversation as a board about how it is we are monitoring progress, understanding whether our approach to middle school math is working, and how we're planning on adjusting course if it isn't.
And that's something we have actually planned as we are reviewing our data cycle dates, not only for the schools, but at the district level, and then the data cycle review schedule for, with the board.
Okay.
So, that is something we can definitely have further conversation about.
Excellent.
And then, one thing that's really promising about the Math 180 and the ST Math is this is something that is being teacher and school-led, as initiatives that they really support. And then, definitely, progress monitoring is absolutely imperative, because that's how the students will move to and from the different intervention supports that they need. And then, this is something that also our TAs can be trained and help support the teachers with in these interventions. So, this is something that we are also eager to see the expansion of from the pilot. But we'll definitely share more information with you, Ms. Smiley.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Are you good?
That's all the question.
Okay. So, we do have some public comment about Math 180. I'm going to take those public comments, and then, we actually had two speakers signed up for mask and face coverings, and we will hear those after the curriculum piece. So, with that, now is the time for public comments. After each speaker has been recognized and unmuted, if they're virtual, they will have three minutes to speak. The board will not have a discussion with any speaker. No profane or vulgar language will be permitted, or personal abuse against any person. Speakers must conclude their remarks at the end of their three minutes. Any speaker that uses threatening language will be asked to leave immediately with no additional warnings. Speakers must speak only about the agenda item that they have signed up for. They will be asked to stop speaking if they start to speak about something else. Public comments should not address any specific confidential student or personnel matter. Complaints concerning any specific employee or student are not permissible during public comments. This is a reminder that in-person speakers will not be allowed to continue their remarks without a mask over their nose and mouth. Our first speaker this evening on Math 180 curriculum is Ms. Sarah Snipes. Welcome.
Yes, I'm speaking tonight on the curriculum item, Math 180, because I'd like, this evening, I have questions for the board about what the priority curriculums are for the entire district. Last week, Dr. Felder and three board members took time out of their schedules to go support a curriculum item in Orange County Schools that was of utmost importance. They went and visited an African-American Studies class so they could speak specifically to students about white nationalist groups.
I'm sorry, Ms. Snipes, you may speak about...
I'm here to speak about curriculum.
Ms. Snipes, you may speak about Math 180, or you'll be asked to stop speaking.
I'm speaking about the curriculum that this board is pushing, and it seems a whole lot that they're pushing racism in these schools, specifically...
Ms. Snipes, this is not about Math 180.
No, I'm sorry, it's not.
If you could tie it up to Math 180, I'd like to hear your comments, please.
My comments are about the curriculum that the board is pushing. They're not pushing educational curriculums about math, science, reading, and writing.
Ms. Snipes, this is your last warning to speak about Math 180, or I will ask you to stop.
I'm talking about math. I'm talking about math, okay? I'm talking about numbers. The numbers of our test scores of our students have plummeted. That isn't aligned with math. Test scores plummeting in the curriculum of math are plummeting. Why? It's because the focus is not on math. The focus is on other topics, like racism and other political agendas.
Ms. Snipes, I'm sorry, your time is up. You need to sit down, or you'll be asked to leave the meeting.
Okay.
This is your lap. You're done. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Snipes, I'm going to ask you to leave the meeting now. Our next speaker that may speak about Math 180 is Gretchen Schmidt. If you speak about Math 180, we'd love to hear your comments. That is the item on the agenda tonight. If you don't allow us to continue our business, you will be asked to leave.
Wow. 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 That's incredible. That's incredible. That is incredible.
So, what do we do with this?
You shut down a parent. You shut up a parent. A parent.
Okay, this is, this is, okay. Gretchen Schmidt, if you would like to speak about Math 180. I'm sorry, what was? Okay, then I'll call on you when masks come up. You may speak virtually, then. Our next speaker on Math 180 is Bill Wicker.
The curriculum was labeled to be discussed about online, and that's what I'm speaking on. The agenda tonight was to address harm caused to students by incidents of hostile racist behavior, so I'm going to speak on that.
I swear, I can't let you speak on this. You may speak about Math 180.
Thank you for exposing your communist ways, just like BLM.
Mr. Wicker...
BLM is an organization founded by Marxists.
You may not speak about this.
His number one goal is to destroy America by shattering the traditional...
I'm going to have to ask you to leave the meeting now, Mr. Wicker. Mr. Wicker, you need to leave the meeting. Thank you. Our next speaker on Math 180, Tom Green.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for having me. I just wanted to speak on the curriculum earlier. I guess the lady over here said it was Math 180, but I wanted to speak on the curriculum in particular, all right? But first, before I do that, there was some memo that was passed out that I just need to answer to, because what happened at Orange County High School, you know, there was only...
I'm sorry, you may speak about Math 180, or I'll have to ask you to stop.
The lady outside put me in Math 180, but I wanted to speak on the curriculum in particular and what's going on.
Well, speak about agenda...
But before that, okay, well, I'm going to speak on this. Let me speak on this thing.
Speak about an agenda.
All right.
When do we get to that item?
One chance.
If you will tell me which agenda item you would like to speak about.
Okay, one chance.
No, sir. You may tell me which agenda item you would like to speak on.
This is what I'm speaking on. One chance.
Which one would you like to speak on?
I am speaking on, right? Critical Race Theory and...
No, sir, I'm sorry, you can't speak on that tonight. You're welcome to stay with us.
Well, give me an agenda item I can't speak on. Give me an agenda item I can't speak on.
You can come back to our, you can, you can speak about actual agenda items, but I can't make one up for you.
Look, look, man.
So, you can come back when you're prepared to speak on that.
We're all parents here. Look, listen, we're all parents here.
Thank you, sir.
We all want a better life.
We're done. I'm going to ask you to stop speaking now.
Give me an agenda...
Thank you. The next speaker is Kenneth Harper. Is Kenneth Harper here, or is he online?
Sign up for that. A lot of people did sign up for that. I will.
Next, excuse me, you have to let us continue our business, or you'll be asked to leave the meeting. Please ask folks to stop speaking and interrupting the meeting. I'm following policy, sir. The next speaker is Lorraine Quail. If you don't quit interrupting the meeting, sir, I will ask you to leave. Lorraine Quail. IT, can you confirm whether Ms. Quail is in person or online? Our next speaker is Connie Kinsey. Okay, we will move back to our public comment for masking, and I will recognize Krista Wicker. Can she be unmuted if she's virtual, please?
I am not seeing her on the attendee list currently.
Okay, thank you. I will now recognize Rob Cardone. He indicated that he is virtual. Sir, please stop interrupting our meeting. If you continue to interrupt our meeting, I'll have to ask you to leave, and I'd really like you to stay, but you can't interrupt our meeting.
Sorry, was that Rob Cardone?
I can't hear him.
Is that Rob Cardone?
Rob Cardone, yes.
Because I'm not seeing him virtually either.
Okay. Our next speaker is Gretchen Schmidt.
Three weeks ago, a joint group of students from Orange and Cedar High Schools set out to create a way to support their friends in sports following a flippant vote by this board, which involved no discussion to limit spectators to two per athlete and have athletes wearing masks...
I'm sorry, Ms. Schmidt, this has to be about masking.
...on and off the field, as well as outdoor spectators. Both mandates in opposition to CDC guidelines was there, is there a problem?
I'm going to make sure we're keeping it to masking.
And well-known established science concerning gas exchange. When the board could have been an example of leadership in the community, a leader in considering all views, even multiple views, or more than just one view of events, evidence, experiences such as known quantifiable facts, in cases of schools, even in this region of the state, and all across the country who have been successfully holding school inside with optional mask policies since April of '21, and simply having students with symptoms remain home until well, as been practiced for centuries now, much less an outdoor event. The board also could have been a leader in the community and a force for unity of all constituents when students attempted to protest these mandates by supporting the school to create an agreed-upon place among the large parking lot where the protest could have happened. The principal admitted to me on the phone of receiving communications from parents who were trying to support the students, following the emails and letters from the board and school shutting down the campus, and for the remainder of the week, working on shutting down even the courage of the students to speak out in public forum along the side of the school property. All of this, of course, under the veil of health and safety. At this point, this school board decided against being a leader of education in the community, opting for going mainstream media style, bolstered by their Antifa allies with a campaign of lies, propaganda, and compelled speech from students who were not even at the protest to testify of what they did not witness. The board led instead in division, hate, and ostracizing concerned parents and disenfranchised students. This, folks, is a manifestation of critical race theory in action.
Okay, Ms. Schmidt, you have to stick to mask mandates, or I'll have to ask you to stop speaking.
Fueled by lies and truth.
Ms. Schmidt, this is your last warning. If it's about masking, you may continue.
The veil of health and safety, we already knew, has been inspired by money, but now we see it runs deeper than this. Let's talk about social and emotional well-being at masks.
You're done. Thank you.
People who speak of social...
We've asked you, please stop speaking, Ms. Schmidt. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a good night. And with that, we will move on to travel restrictions. Ms. Schmidt, if you would like to stay in the meeting, you need to stop interrupting us. This is your final warning, or you'll be asked to leave. Mr. Atherton, let's talk about travel restrictions.
Thank you. The question I have is, I know right now we have a lot of staff challenges. You know, there was a group that wanted to go do some academics contest, and they weren't allowed to, and I'm very concerned with us opening this up when we're having day-to-day issues with making sure we have coverage for classes. I have had others call me about this. That's just concerning. If we open this up and we pay for something and we have a plan for them to go out, and then we have shortages, how do we ensure we have enough teachers to cover or staff, whether it's district that's coming into our classes or, you know, substitutes? So, I just have a concern with us opening this up right now, given all of our challenges at our schools. So, that's, that's just what I wanted to say about it.
Yeah, so, thank you, Mr. Atherton, for sharing, and that's why the caveat here is on a case-by-case basis. So, each case will be considered individually, given all the many things that you just mentioned.
So, are, is this also going to open up field trips for, for the class, or this is just for staff?
This is specific to staff and out-of-state travel for us employees, yes.
Okay, I have concerns, just because we can't predict what our peaks and valleys are. Just have concerns, I don't know if others do.
Ms. Smiley?
I hear the, I hear the concern that you have because of the staffing challenges. I do think the, I am fine with it because of the case-by-case basis, if that's being made senior in the administration somewhere to make decisions about whether the capacity is there to allow it.
So, sorry, Mrs. Smiley, there's a bit of echo. I'm not hearing you clearly, so...
I said, I'm fine with it because it is on a case-by-case basis, and you're going to be evaluating whether it is, it is reasonably, it can be reasonably accommodated to do. And, and maybe not you personally, but senior leadership is going to be making these decisions. For example, people in the central office, if they're, if they're traveling, someone senior will be making these decisions, somebody with a view of whether the capacity is there to do it. Is that right?
So, if I, if I may speak to that, Dr. Felder? So, yes, Ms. Smiley, what we're doing, Mr. Atherton, is case by case, we are reviewing each request that comes in to first and foremost consider the impact on students and the classes. So, if it's going to require a substitute teacher, we know that at this point, we're not honoring those. What we are honoring is those that don't require substitutes, and then next, if it's absolutely a requirement of their job duty. So, even though it may be, it could, all could be said that it's, you know, impacting their job duty, but it's not, if it's not specific to them in their function, and it's not just an opportunity to enhance their learning, then we are reviewing those. But if it's, and we are asking staff, do not sign up for something prior to approval, because we do not want them paying for something without approval, because if that's the case, we won't always be able to reimburse them. So, we are asking them to please check ahead of time if it's approved, and we're taking account all those considerations prior to any approval, and again, case by case.
Thank you. That, that makes a lot of sense, especially when you talk about having to have a substitute, and that was, that was really my concern. So, thank you for that clarification.
And I apologize, Mrs. Smiley, there's an echo from where you are to where I'm sitting, at least.
And I think if I sit in different places, that may help, too. So, I'm sorry.
A motion to approve the following, the last two agenda items, Math 180 and travel restrictions. So, moved? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, this has passed. Thank you. Our next agenda item is a resolution honoring Indigenous Peoples' Day 2021 and the Native People of North Carolina. I first want to recognize members of the Okanichi Band of the Suponi Nation who are in attendance with us tonight as we honor Indigenous Peoples' Day in Orange County Schools. Please join us in welcoming them. Please feel free to stand if you would like to. We have Elder John Jeffries, who is a past chief of the OBSN, Elder Roger Hayes, who's a tribal member, Vicky Jeffries, who's a tribal administrator, Beverly Payne, who's a past chief and the first female chief of the tribe, who's also a tribal council member. And virtually, we have Lawrence Dunmore, who is a tribal member and past chief. We'd also like to recognize Kara Stewart from the Suponi Tribe, who is attending virtually and is also the literacy interventionalist and reading specialist. and is also the literacy interventionalist and reading specialist at Efflin Cheeks Global Elementary. Other members of the Suppani Tribe who are with us virtually this evening are Otis Martin, chief, Dorothy Stuart Yates, chairperson, Dante Desiderio, chief executive officer, Charlene Martin, financial officer, and Taryn Brewington, who is the tribal secretary. We are so grateful for the relationship we are building, and we are so glad to have you all here tonight. And I will now pass it to board member Carrie Doyle, who has researched and facilitated the creation of this resolution and will now read it for us.
Thank you, Chair McKenzie. And I wanted to say thank you to the members of the Okanichi Tribal Council who have helped me with this resolution and some of the history, as well as Kara Stewart, who has helped in, in board training. Resolution honoring Indigenous Peoples' Day 2021 and the Native Peoples of North Carolina. Whereas, Orange County Schools was founded on land previously settled by ancestors of the Okanichi Band of the Suppani Nation and whereas, the ancestors of the Okanichi people lived west of the mountains in the Ohio River Valley for millennia. And whereas, over 1,000 years ago, the ancestors crossed the mountains and settled in the high hilly land of the east. And whereas, the people collectively known as Yesa established villages along the Great Trading Path and following the slaughter of the Okanichi by Nathaniel Bacon's men, by 1682, many of the Okanichi survivors migrated south and settled along the banks of the Ino River near present-day Hillsborough. And whereas, between 1492 and 1880, between 2 and 5.5 million Native Americans were enslaved in the Americas in addition to 12.5 million African slaves. And whereas, under a peace treaty with Governor Spotswood of the Colony of Virginia, the Okanichi formed a confederation with the Suppani and several other tribes, collectively referred to as the Suppani Nation. And whereas, one of the earliest documented experiences of an indigenous children along the colonial boundaries of North Carolina and Virginia in white-run schools was in 1714 to 1718, when Suppani children were held hostage to be educated and religiously indoctrinated in Fort Christiana Indian School in Brunswick County, Virginia. And whereas, the practice of forced boarding of native children in residential schools with the goal of assimilation into white Christian culture continued across the United States well into the 20th century. And whereas, North Carolina's 1868 Constitution, written when the state rejoined the United States after the Civil War, created a public school system free for all the children of the state aged 6 to 21. In 1875, the state constitution was amended to specify that the, quote, "children of the white race and the children of the colored race shall be taught in separate public schools." And whereas, the local Indian schools that functioned during the over 100 years of school segregation in North Carolina were mostly built with the cost and labor of the Native Community, without state-funded building materials or labor, unlike the white schools. And the Indian communities did not have choice in the white teachers sent to instruct their children. And whereas, Okanichi children attended their own Indian school, starting in 1840, then later the McCray School prior to 1924, and subsequently Martin School. And whereas, the State of Virginia's Racial Integrity Act of 1924, with the intention of protecting a, quote, "pure white race" by forbidding interracial marriage, was also a tool to effect erasure of tribal heritage and Native American identity by limiting racial identifiers only to two, white or colored, which impacted Native Peoples far beyond Virginia. And whereas, the certificates of degree of Indian blood issued by the Bureau of Indian Affairs, known as issue cards, were a method of securing recognition of tribal ancestry, but the intention of which by white-run systems was to control movement of Native Americans on a day-to-day basis in North Carolina throughout much of the 1900s. And whereas, Native Americans were not able to exercise their right to vote as established by the 15th amendment, amendment of 1870, until the Snyder Act of 1924 specifically granted full citizenship to Native Americans, following which their effective ability to vote was blocked by strategies of those in power such as poll taxes and literacy tests, until the Voting Rights Act of 1965 and subsequent legislation in the 1970s and 1980s. And whereas, the Okanichi community in Alamance, Orange, and Caswell Counties formally reorganized in 1984, establishing a 12-member tribal council, which in 1995 amended the name of the tribe to the Okanichi Band of the Suppani Nation, which finally received state recognition in 2002, whereupon the, the Okanichi purchased a 25-acre portion of its ancestral lands in the Little Texas Community of Northeast Alamance County. And whereas, for centuries before and for decades since school integration, the stories of Native Peoples have been inaccurately and often disrespectfully told by educators, authors, and publishers even today. And whereas, the path to academic success for indigenous students as for all students requires a school setting that fosters a healthy sense of identity, communicating that they are valued and capable and not one that inflicts harm by inaccurate and racist curriculum, literature, and practices. And whereas, today, students and staff in Orange County schools have tribal heritage reflecting an unknown number of North Carolina's eight state-recognized tribes: the Okanichi Band of the Suppani Nation, the Suppani, the Hallowa Suppani, Wakama Suen, Lumbee, Maharin, Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians, and the Kohari Tribes. And whereas, the Okanichi Band of the Suppani Nation has over 2,000 members in and around Orange County schools, and is based today in Orange, Alamance, and Caswell Counties, and is represented by cultural leaders and experts serving in our K-12 public schools, our local colleges and universities, and in professional fields of all kinds. And whereas, in the 2021 school year, Orange County Schools began the pursuit of establishing a Native American Studies course offering at the high school level, and the Orange County Schools Board of Education began training to better support outcome for indigenous students in OCS. And whereas, on April 27, 2021, North Carolina Governor Roy Cooper acknowledged the racial bias working against protections for Native American women by proclaiming May 5, 2021, the Day of Awareness of Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women. And whereas, on June 22, 2021, Secretary of the Interior Deb Haaland, Laguna Pueblo, announced a federal Indian boarding school initiative to investigate the troubled legacy of forced removal of native children from their families, stating, quote, "The Interior Department will address the intergenerational impact of Indian boarding schools to shed light on the unspoken traumas of the past. No matter how hard it will be, I know this process will be long and difficult. I know this process will be painful. It won't undo the heartbreak and loss we feel, but only by acknowledging the past can we work toward a future that we're all proud to embrace." And whereas, Orange County Schools Policy 1030, Equity in Education, states that our school district acknowledges persistent racial intolerance, inequities, and academic disparities in our district. And whereas, we see our schools as centers for culturally diverse learning, where all students are educated to their fullest potential, and as centers of our community around which we come together in support of the education of all students. Therefore, be it resolved, we recognize the value and contributions of our indigenous community, continuing to seek relationships with and guidance from the Okanichi Tribal Council, educational leaders from the Suppani Tribe, and leaders of the other eight North Carolina tribes, especially as we learn of their representation among the Orange County Schools community. Be it further resolved, we will continue to implement teacher training from the North Carolina State Advisory Council on Indian Education Professional Development Materials, including PD 8048, so that our classroom materials are culturally relevant, our celebration of holidays are culturally respectful, and our indigenous students can experience the equitable school climate they deserve. Be it further resolved, we will continue to pursue the establishment of an honors-level course in Native American Studies at the high school level. Be it further resolved, we will seek to better compile accurate data reflecting who our native families and students are, thereby removing the asterisk of invisibility. Be it further resolved, Orange County Schools will officially and permanently recognize and designate on the OCS calendar and other appropriate materials the second Monday in October each year as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And be it further resolved, that Orange County Schools will work with the Okanichi Band of the Suppani Nation to determine how best we can recognize the tribal heritage of the land where River Park Elementary School was established. And be it further resolved, that the Orange County Schools Board of Education stands in solidarity with our indigenous students, staff, and community members, and will continue to promote, to promote school communities that foster an affirming sense of personal identity for all students. The board would like to express our deepest gratitude to the Okanichi Band of the Suppani Nation for their willingness to guide Orange County Schools in becoming a better place for indigenous students to learn and grow, and for their continued partnership with district leadership. Historical information from Lawrence A. Dunmore, OBSN, as well as from their website, was used in creation of this resolution. The board would like to extend also special appreciation to Kara Stewart, Suppani, for sharing her expertise and personal story as an educator with the board. Much of this resolution was developed from her professional materials.
Thank you so much, Ms. Doyle. Before we open the floor for comments, we do have one public speaker on this agenda item, and that is J.R. Farrell.
How you doing? So maybe I won't get kicked out, who knows? So I would like to say thank you for these guys here, for allowing us to live here in your land, because we stole it, however we look at it, right? We, you know, now we're all Americans though, right? So I would like to know one thing, is how they're gonna fit into the critical race theory? How is that gonna happen? Hmm, you probably don't have an answer for that one, do you? So, but, check this out. So a couple board meetings ago, there was a fellow that came here, that was an indigenous Native American, and you told him he couldn't come back anymore because he threatened you. Obviously, I don't know, when I listened to him talk, he didn't talk too bad.
We're not here to talk about that. We're here to honor our indigenous leaders, and I ask you to be respectful of this space.
I am being respectful. I'm being respectful. I'm asking a question. Or I'm telling you something. How about that? So you told him he couldn't come back.
This is not about Indigenous Peoples' Day.
He was, he was an indigenous person, and he's not, he's not even able to come to get recognition tonight because you asked him not to come anymore.
If you'd like to speak about Indigenous Peoples' Day, welcome to do so.
I am, I already have, right? So that's my question, is how do you look at these people, right? That we're, we're sealing them out, right? That's what you're doing.
Sir, I'm sorry, you have to stop speaking now.
Yeah.
Thank you. If you would like to stay in the room, you may, but you may not interrupt the meeting, and you have to stop speaking now. Otherwise, I'll ask you to leave. Okay, I'm gonna ask you to leave. Thank you, sir. Good night. Have a good night. I am so sorry for the deep disrespect that we all just witnessed. And I'll open the floor to board members. Just gonna sit here for a moment. Regroup. Does anyone have any comment, Mr. Atherton?
So I'd just like to say thank you to Kara Stewart, as mentioned in the resolution, for all of her time and effort to help educate us. Thank you all for attending tonight. We're, I'm greatly honored for you being here. That's all I wanted to say.
Mr. Atherton. Other board members? Ms. Smiley?
I just wanted to recognize and thank Ms. Doyle for her leadership in beginning to forge these stronger relationships. It's very meaningful, I think, and so just very appreciative of that, that you've brought to the board.
Right, yes. Well, I'd like to express my appreciation to Carrie for taking, Ms. Doyle, for taking the lead on this very important resolution, and the staff and everyone that worked with her is very important, and I thank you for the time, and I apologize for the lack of respect.
Ms. Hauser?
I just wanted to thank Ms. Doyle for the resolution, and I wanted to thank our neighbors from the Okanichi Band of the Suppani Nation for being with us tonight and how grateful we are to have you.
I also just want to highlight that the historian from the Okanichi Band of the Suppani Nation also did a lot of work helping us review this resolution, bring forward facts, and they have been amazing thought partners in this process as well. I know that Dr. Felder, Ms. Jeffries have done a lot of work together, so we are just deeply committed to this work, and I think that in this auditorium here tonight, we are seeing exactly why it's so desperately needed.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Atherton?
I, I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Doyle. I didn't mean to leave you out, but, you know, you've done a fantastic job, so thank you.
And so with that, unless Dr. Felder or any members of the tribe have anything they, they would like to share with us, then I would take a motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The resolution passes. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. The next item on our agenda tonight is COVID-19 safety and health updates. We'll have a presentation, and then we have two speakers signed up.
Good evening, all board members. So my name is Sylvia Compton, lead nurse. So I believe, can you guys hear me okay now? I'm short, so I got to lean in. Okay. I do believe you have this on your agenda already with a couple of links on there, so I'm gonna go through the first one. Strong Schools did send an updated version on October 5, and the major change in that was the exception to exclusion. It was just students within the school setting that were properly masked after an exposure. Now that includes all individuals within the school setting that are properly masked after an exposure. It still does not apply to any extracurricular activities or sports. Another update was, there were some numbers that were presented last week or the week before with our local health department vaccination rates. Those numbers were inaccurate. It was actually showing a higher percentage of vaccination rates for our county. That was an error on the CDC and the state part. They were including in there some, some of the vaccination rates, and they realized that they did misinform us with numbers, so it's actually closer to about a 69% fully vaccination rate within our county. We still continue to be in a high rate of transmission within our county. As of today, there was 211 cases of COVID-19 reported in the last seven days, which is an increase of 2.56% on the positivity, positivity rate. Any questions from anyone concerned? Comments?
Ms. Smiley?
I just have a quick one. I had seen the piece about the revised vaccination rates and them going down. Do we know if that affected the vaccination rates by, have they said anything about age and, like, in that student age range?
No, that is still needing to be updated with our local health department, because they gotta go back through those numbers and verify to see where the errors were when they did originally report the total percentage.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hauser?
I have, I have two questions. The first is on the posit, on the new cases. Do we have any sense about how many of these people are symptomatic versus not? Do we have any sense about how many of these people are symptomatic versus not, and how many are vaccinated? And then, secondly, with the relaxed quarantining rules, how is it going for your staff?
So the answer is, I don't have the data that you're asking. What I do know is what the rate is for hospitalization. The number has increased as far as the people that are unvaccinated that are requiring hospital care, that's what we're seeing a lot of. But there is still secondary transmission seen in the population of adults that are already vaccinated where we're seeing breakthrough, and that's just within our school system that I can see that as well. With the individuals that are not fully vaccinated, do not have to quarantine, update with strong schools, that has definitely helped us out in school as far as keeping attendance and keeping staff in school. When it comes to nurses, we're still doing the full contact tracing investigation, because even though we don't have to exclude them, we still have to notify that they're close contacts, because the recommendation per our local health department is anybody that is considered a close contact should still get tested within three to five days after exposure. They don't have to stay home, but they still are asking for them to get tested, because we know, we do know that there is a high rate of people that are asymptomatic. As well as, you know, even though we're distancing, masking, vaccinating, that's not 100% proof that you're not gonna get COVID. It is a preventative measure. So we are aware of that, and that's why they are recommending that you still go ahead and get tested.
Okay, I think that I'm gonna recognize our speakers now, if that's okay? And, okay, Lawrence Streitfeld is the next speaker. Thank you, Ms. Compton, so much. Ms. Streitfeld, are you there? Are you all able to find her? Streitfeld?
Streitfeld, you're unmuted. Oh, hello, can you hear me now?
We can, welcome.
Great, thank you so much. Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I really appreciated hearing what Nurse Compton just shared. I'm calling to really urge the Board to think hard about not only the close contact definitions and the quarantine definitions, but how you all share this information with the wider community, with parents, teachers, staff, and community members. Still seeing that it's on the homepage of the, of the district site where some of these links to COVID information are, but not on the homepages of our schools. I would really urge you all to think about how much this information can benefit our community in terms of folks being aware of where cases are, of the risks that there may be to staff and students, and any precautions and extra precautions that families may want to take, including testing. It's not clear where the information resides. If you go to any school's homepage, there is not a link to the district's COVID information that's apparent at the top of the page, like many other school districts have done with the word COVID stats, and, you know, in large letters. So I would urge the schools, the district, to put information front and center, including the numbers of students in quarantine, the quarantine policy, the policy that Nurse Compton described of notification despite not quarantining folks who are, who are maybe exposed. I think all of that information would greatly benefit our community, and the greater the transparency, the more folks, including all of you, can make good decisions that are well-informed. I'm also concerned that some of the policies appear to be focusing on the protection of in-person learning at the risk of not protecting public health and student health, and particularly students who are still ineligible to be vaccinated. And I would urge the Board to think hard about policies which don't require quarantine and may put at risk our students and our staff and teachers. And I thank you all for all that you are doing. I believe that greater transparency is the way that you all will ensure everyone's health and safety, and that for the large number of families and students and staff who are not at this meeting, that that information should be readily visible. We should be able to see not only how many students are in quarantine, how many have tested positive by school, but we really should be able to see all the information that you all have directed the staff to gather, including the numbers by school, the stats for vaccination, the stats for testing results for staff and athletics. Those, those data should be available to all of us. That's data that's collected using public resources, and it's public information, and other school districts are sharing this and asking you all to take a leadership position in sharing data proactively, so that families don't have to search for it, and in the same way to share information in terms of notifications about when cases are reported, to share it proactively, not on only, not only on Friday nights, but all throughout the week when cases are reported, to report it accurately and on time. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night. Our next speaker is Katie Harper, who is virtual.
Great, thank you for taking public comment. I wanted to speak on item number five, to ask the district to consider vaccine clinics at elementary schools as soon as the FDA approves the Pfizer vaccine for five to 12-year-olds. I'm hoping that the district will partner with the health department to offer vaccine clinics like the ones that they offered at the high schools recently. And as a parent to two kids in elementary school, I'm confident that there are many parents, myself included, who would volunteer to help set up and take down and get the word out for these clinics. I believe we really have a community-building opportunity if schools are prepared to offer vaccines as soon as they are approved. And I ask the district to please consider calling on parents to help with this. I also wanted to take a minute to thank you all for following the NC Strong Schools toolkit so closely, and for sharing that resource with parents. Thank you for preventing clusters by the use of universal masking, and for keeping kids safe by requiring eligible adults to be vaccinated. I appreciate and respect the hard work you are putting in every day to care for students in Orange County, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Okay, our next item is, unless there was further discussion about that, before we move on to the RFP bid tab. Okay, then we will move on to that. Is that Mr. Abely? Okay. So we're gonna have to come back to those action items, and we will move on to the resolution acknowledging how students are harmed by the hostile and racist environment within the Orange County Schools community. When this resolution was written this past week, I had no idea that would take on an even greater significance as folks assembled here tonight in response to the Lieutenant Governor Mark Robinson's hateful rhetoric that came to light this past week. The kind of open discrimination in his recorded remarks from Adsbury Baptist Church in Seagrove, North Carolina are indeed filthy, and I join other elected leaders around the state in calling on the Lieutenant Governor to resign. And with that, I will read the resolution. I will pass a copy out to you all. Have a little bit of help reading, sharing one part of it. I'll wait till everyone has a copy and gets settled in it so they can follow along. Everybody set? Mm-hmm. Okay. Whereas, at recent Orange County Schools events and meetings of the Board of Education, there has been a growing presence of white nationalist displays and intimidating behavior, including bigoted, misogynistic, racist, homophobic, and transphobic language. And whereas the Orange County Schools community has been confronted with a planned and concerted effort to bully and intimidate students and their families, staff and Board members, Black and Brown members of the community, and the LGBTQ+ community, and whereas emotional and psychological harm has been caused by this presence and collective behavior, harm which has been deepened by white people standing by and applauding, failing to intervene, or even failing to name the racist, bigoted, and threatening behavior. Whereas at school events, Board meetings, and on-school property, men wore clothing indicating their allegiance to a Western chauvinist and extremist group with ties to white supremacy. And whereas the presence of extremist groups in our community and in proximity to school property influences school climate, and whereas school climate, particularly racial climate, is directly related to motivation, engagement, belonging, and academic outcomes for all youth, but especially youth of color. And whereas it is the responsibility of school personnel and adults in the community to create safe spaces that allow all students, and particularly marginalized students, to engage with school to their fullest potential, and whereas respect for diversity and emotional and physical safety are central elements in the safe and supportive learning environments adapted by the U.S. Department of Education in 2015, and whereas honest debate regarding the value of specific health measures in the interest of students has been exploited by opportunistic adults motivated by racist self-interest, and whereas there is a danger of Orange County Schools students being recruited by white supremacist groups. And whereas staff members have emailed Board members about recent events, including...
Having witnessed recent Board meetings, the most recent one in person, I felt afraid, afraid for you, afraid for me, afraid for our students and staff. If we don't draw a line at racism and hate, then why are we here? And more importantly, who are we here for?
Next quote. One of the reasons that I decided to become a teacher is because I believe that all students of all backgrounds deserve love and a place of belonging. Although the Proud Boys have come and gone from the proximity of Orange High School's campus, their hateful presence has remained and continues to trouble my students. From the time that the Proud Boys arrived near campus, students in my classes have expressed a deep concern and paranoia about what would happen if and when the Proud Boys might show up on campus again. As a teacher, I always want to comfort my students and reassure them that I'll be able to care for them. But as it pertains to the potential for hate groups like Proud Boys to show up again, I'm not able to offer my students reassurance about the future for their safety. Therefore, I think it is important for my students, for Orange County Schools, and for our nation, that we work towards creating a more welcoming and accepting place that treasures people of all backgrounds. And whereas students from Orange High School shared with the Board of Education the following statements, we're gonna go around this way. So I'll start with Vice Chair Stevens.
Okay, right. The thought of an organization known for violence and racism choosing our school to make a statement scares me. I can't believe they are allowed to be so close to our school, even with a nonviolent protest. The presence of a nonviolent, right-wing group that hates me for my beliefs and sexuality has only added to that feeling. Knowing that they are able to easily access my campus without repercussions makes me fearful of school-related violence.
I personally felt unsafe. There were a lot of them, and nobody did anything, didn't even tell them to go away. It could have turned dangerous really quickly. They were talking about how BLM is a terrorist organization. I did not feel safe. It was more than just masks.
I just want to remind everyone to speak into their microphones.
I would just like to say that the Proud Boys made me feel unsafe at my school. I was worried that something might happen where I or other people would get injured.
This gathering was not student-led, as the gathering was made up of an overwhelming number of adults, most of which were not even parents of Orange High students. These adults were also not protesting masks and guest limitations alone, but they stood for a different cause. They sent their message loud and clear with their chosen colors. The black and yellow they displayed told everyone that they were the Proud Boys.
The Proud Boys, a known homophobic, misogynistic, neo-fascist organization gathered outside my school on Friday. As a female student, I felt threatened by their gathering and yelling and sign-holding.
I wanted to let you know that the students do not feel safe knowing that this extremist hate group can post up in large numbers outside a public school. Their message and goals are actively against people like me, young women, and many other members of our schools, such as LBG, LGBTQ+ students. I implore you to take our feelings of the lack of safety into consideration for any decisions made on these gatherings in the future.
I don't want the Proud Boys to show up on our campus. Orange High School should feel like a safe space for everyone, and them being here can make it feel like they are in danger.
I didn't understand how they were allowed to display and shout messages that attacked my personal identity as a gay male adolescent.
It's weird that the protesters felt that they had the right to show up at school to voice their concerns and arrest due to passing.
At this protest, there were representatives from the Proud Boys, a far-right organization that supports ideals of racism, neo-fascism, sexism, homophobia, among others. As a young Black woman, it was scary to hear about an organization openly presenting themselves that close to my school, not to mention I was on campus during these protests. What if something like this was to happen again, but there were more people? What if violence breaks out? Now that something like this has happened once, it's bound to get worse if actions aren't taken to stop it.
September 24th, the Proud Boys showed up to give their opinions on the county's rules. They were very hateful and said terrible things. Students don't feel safe because of how comfortable the Proud Boys were.
As a Black female, the whole Proud Boy issue really affected me, because over the course of the years, I have experienced racism and hate. Therefore, this is an issue me as a student wants to be hands-on with, especially because I'm a freshman. This isn't what I expected my first few weeks of high school to look like. I know Orange is a safe place, but others might not know that.
My mind began to wander as we passed the group of racist, homophobic, and misogynist protesters by the Orange County School student parking lot. They yelled homophobic slurs, called us communists, yelled comments about race, expelled lies upon lies, and expressed their dislike for our Black principal simply for his race. Questions began to arise in my mind. What will Monday in class be like? Will I be ridiculed by classmates? How articulate is this for students to be forced out of the rear entrance of a school for fear of being ridiculed? How disgusting is it for students to physically break down at the news of homophobic, racist, and misogynistic protests being out in front of their favorite high school? I do not feel safe. My peers do not feel safe. Any person who attends this school who is not a white heterosexual male was in danger that day and is still in danger from that day, and...
And whereas Policy 1030, Equity in Education, states that OCS acknowledges persistent racial intolerance and equities and academic disparities in our district, and whereas Orange County Schools is committed to disrupting all forms of discrimination in our school community by challenging intolerant behavior that jeopardizes the safety, well-being, or learning of others, and therefore be it resolved that the Orange County Schools Board of Education stands united against all forms of white nationalism and white supremacy. Be it further resolved that the Orange County Schools Board of Education recognizes the phrase "Black Lives Matter" as an affirmation of the inherent value of the lives of our Black students, staff, and community members. Be it further resolved that the district will create a detailed action and communication plan for future plan for future incidents involving hate groups in the OCS community, including a text alert system as requested by students. Be it further resolved that the district will make students and staff aware of counseling services available to them following the events where they are targeted by hate groups as requested by students. Be it further resolved that OCS will provide ongoing education to staff members and students on how to recognize extremist symbols and tactics, and what to do when they are recognized. Be it further resolved that Orange County Schools will continue to have an open and honest dialogue about how to best address the threat to students and staff safety when there's a presence of hate groups on property adjacent to or on school campuses. Be it further resolved that the Board stands in solidarity with our Indigenous, Black, Brown, LGBTQ+ students, staff, and community members, and we will continue to name harm and stand against hate in our community. At this time, there are many public speakers signed up, and then the Board will have discussion. Our first speaker on this item is Latandra Strong.
Good evening, Board, and thank you for your courage. I thank you, because we need leaders not just when things are easy, when decisions are easily made, when you can decipher between what is good and what is bad. We need leaders to dig in deep and figure out what's the best decision for our district. We need leaders that when adults are fighting, polarized, not getting along, that will ask the question, "But what about the children?" You guys listened to the children. You listened to the pain in the hearts of students of color, of LGBTQ students, of students who would not have been accepted at that rally. You listened to the children who frequently have no voice in this district. And while that rally may have been okay for some students, it was not okay for all students. And that's the point, that we need great leaders. And so I thank you for your courage. I am certain that with this audience, it is not easy to proclaim the things that you proclaimed today. But at a time like this, is when the leadership and your courage needs to be high, so that we can go high and support our students. I would ask that as you continue to explore ways that you can support our students, that you will recognize that you only heard from a few students, and that the harm is far more deep than you have seen. It is one of those iceberg situations. I thank you so much for showing up today, and I ask that you take an extra dose of courage, because that's what it's going to take against this wall of hatred that is coming in our district, not probably for some people around here, but not for the majority of people in Orange County. Thank you again, and keep up the great work.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Heather Redding.
As a resident of Orange County, I would like to thank the chair, board members, the superintendent, teachers, and staff for your enduring commitment to the safety and well-being of our district. You are being asked, again, to make impossibly difficult choices, and I know you are working tirelessly to ensure that every decision you make has an outcome that prioritizes health, equity, and access to educational resources. I am here to speak on Agenda Item 8 and to urge you to pass the resolution to address harm caused by students by incidents of hostile and racist behavior. I would like to thank the brave students and staff whose voices were included in the proposed resolution, and also acknowledge those who may not have felt safe speaking out at all. I hope this resolution passes unanimously, as there should be nothing controversial about naming systemic racism and disparities. There should be nothing controversial about denouncing white nationalism and white supremacy. There should be nothing controversial about protecting students from extremist groups, hate groups, and those who do harm to students due to bigotry and intolerance. There should be nothing controversial about sitting or standing in solidarity with Indigenous, Black, Brown, LGBTQ+ students, staff, and employees. There should be nothing controversial about proclaiming Black Lives Matter. There should be nothing controversial about moving our community forward towards inclusion, equity, and safety. As a school board, you are charged with protecting our children from a range of threats, and I would add that organized bigotry must remain on this list. I hope you pass this resolution without delay and continue to stay vocal, because silence from adults and leaders in the face of extremism is a dangerous failure to our children. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Katrina Wesson, and she is virtual.
Thank you for recognizing me. I would just like to thank the Board of Education for elevating the voices of students, and it definitely breaks my heart that they're having to feel this way on school property. And I think it's stunning that people show up in uniform. I'm not sure how many of these folks are parents of students. It sounds like not many. I do appreciate the resolution, and I do think you should pass it with no hesitation.
Next speaker tonight is virtual, and is Tracy Ovitt. Ms. Ovitt, are you there? Is Ms. Ovitt on the line?
I don't see her.
Okay. Our next speaker is Spring Dawson McClure.
Thank you so much for taking time for public comment. I want to just pause for a minute and really honor the students who courageously reached out to you and shared the fear that they experienced. Appreciate your courageous leadership, and I hope that you will vote unanimously to pass this resolution tonight. As a psychologist, I want to offer what's really just common sense, but in case it's helpful for anybody to hear the research and the science of early childhood development and learning that backs up this resolution. Children need to feel safe to learn. Children need to physiologically be regulated in order to benefit from the instruction that their teachers are providing, to connect, to learn, to persist in the face of challenges. Children need to know that the adults responsible for them at home and at school have their back and stand up to hate and the threat of violence every time. I'm so grateful to your resolution, and I hope that it matters in some way for our Black teachers and staff, for our teachers and staff of color to feel like you've got their back. Research shows that one of the main reasons that folks end up leaving the teaching profession is because they do not feel believed about the racism that they experience at school. They do not feel supported, feel burdened, on top of everything else that's happening. So I think your resolution matters. I think it's an important step, and it has some action behind it. It's not just words. Research shows clearly that all children benefit when they have Black and Brown teachers. This matters very much for Black and Brown students, and it matters for white students, too. We see this in study after study. And so every time you speak up, every action you take to support and retain our teachers of color in this district matters very much. As a mom raising two white kids in this district at Central and Gravely, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for hanging in there and making such a difference every day. This job is far more difficult than it should be right now. And when there is so much vitriol and so much hostility in this room tonight, and when a nurse says your child has to stay home because they've been exposed, all of the ins and outs that y'all are facing every day right now. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for hanging in there for our children.
Someone on the meeting needs to mute themselves. Our next speaker is Cody Snipes.
My name is Cody, and I'm a senior in Orange High School. I'm here today to express my frustrations with the sport. My time in Orange County Schools has been good until four years ago. I've had different principals each year of high school. There have been no consistency in leadership, class schedules are constantly changing, and teachers are leaving left and right. And I blame you. You have put your political agenda ahead of our education. Just take a look at the test scores. COVID or not, each student should be performing on grade level or better. The political division you have created in this community is destroying it. Just take a look around. The students wanted to have a safe, unifying tailgate protest in the Orange High Student Parking Lot to protest spectator limits that came out of right field from no data to back it up. We students wanted to express our frustrations where we could support our football team even though we could not watch and still have social time like social, emotional learning actively supports. But because you shut us down and denied our First Amendment right, we were forced to move to the street. We had a tremendous amount of support for this event until you shut us down. This led to a protest on the side of the road, not on Orange High property. I, in fact, was at that protest where you claimed the Proud Boys were racist, homophobic, and were recruiting students. Let me ask you this: Were you there? Did you hear what they were saying? In fact, what was the race of the man with the megaphone? I can confirm that you, the Orange County Schools Board of Education, spread severe misinformation about this protest. Please tell me how an African-American with a megaphone shouting "All Lives Matter" is racist. I can also confirm that there was no recruiting going on whatsoever. They were strictly there in support of us students, and many of them have kids in Orange County Schools. I suggest that you board members get your priorities straight and stop trying to force your political agenda down our throats. How about you get an accurate representation of the student body instead of trying to divide us? How about you actually get students' feelings about mask mandates, spectator limits? We students are tired of these political games. We just want a politically free environment to learn. We can't understand our teachers and classmates with these face coverings that are even labeled "not for prevention of infectious diseases." And for God's sake, we're in the middle of a pandemic, and there's not even consistent soap, paper towels, and toilet paper in the bathrooms. Did you hear me? Paper towels, soap, and toilet paper are not even consistently in the bathroom. Those are all fundamentals of hygiene. It's almost like you really don't care about us students. You're just worried about how perceived by the public so you can get your funding and quote "unite this community" when in fact you've done the exact opposite. Thank you.
Next speaker, Chris Roman, who I believe is virtual.
Sorry, can I get the name again?
Chris Roman.
Mr. Roman, you're unmuted. Mr. Roman, you're unmuted.
Our next speaker is Nan Fulcher.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm here to address the resolution to address harm caused by students, sorry, caused to students by incidents of hostile and racist behavior. And in evaluating the proposal by the Board, I noticed that many of the passages refer to incidents and behaviors attributed to extremist groups, and the various descriptions of the groups are listed and the use of the phrase "hate group" when outlining the actions of the resolution. I understand the need in policymaking to state the phenomenon in general terms, but I think it's essential in this case to view the behaviors emanating from individuals rather than always and specifically being associated with groups. The group definition is far too limiting. Any group can claim that they did not take part in a hateful or discriminatory act, and any person can easily denounce being part of a group, even if the group does engage in those behaviors. We should recognize that group affiliation is irrelevant, since an action always boils down to the individual committing it. One person standing near the school grounds and showering students with hate speech is no less damaging than if they don't have anyone standing with them. As for the different groups, it doesn't matter if it's a collection of people brought together by circumstance, such as tonight, and people outside our community have been rallied to this location, or whether it's an established organization with an agenda. So even though I mentioned that speech can affect students through a single voice, when it comes to physical intimidation, it's always the case that the greater the number, the greater the threat. And it's always the case that a one-to-one ratio, an adult always has an advantage over a child. So despite my respect for the proposal, I cannot fully support its immediate passage without some attention to that language, and I feel it could be appropriate to put this, albeit urgent, action on pause to reflect on those more specific things, instead of feeling the urgency to be reactionary to a particular set of events that happened to this community. It might be better to look at this in a broader scale. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Beatrice Setnick. Can we confirm if she is online?
Katrina, you're unmuted.
Oh, hello. Thank you for this evening. I have a comment based on an earlier display of data on the COVID that I just wanted to quickly address before I discuss the hostile environment.
I'm so sorry, ma'am. I can only let you speak about the agenda items. I really apologize. You're welcome to send us an email about it.
Okay, well, in regards to the hostile behavior, I have become aware very recently of very disturbing hostile behavior that is being implemented to all children in our public school systems across North Carolina that affects every child irrespective of race, gender, orientation, and religion, and that is the pornographic materials that are being made of...
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry. That's not on our agenda tonight. You're welcome to come back to the next meeting and discuss it during open public comment or send us an email about it.
A felony offense of...
Okay, please mute her. Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Sarah Patterson. I believe that they're virtual. I believe that they're virtual.
Can't see... There she is. Ms. Patterson, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, district leadership, and parents and students of Orange County Schools. My name is Sarah Patterson, and I have the privilege of serving one of our elementary schools as its school social worker. I read to you from the National Association of Social Workers Code of Ethics preamble: "The primary mission of the social work profession is to enhance human well-being and help meet the basic human needs of all people, with particular attention to the needs and empowerment of people who are vulnerable, oppressed, and living in poverty. Social workers are sensitive to cultural and ethnic diversity and strive to end discrimination, oppression, poverty, and other forms of social injustice. The mission of the social work profession is rooted in a set of core values. These core values, embraced by social workers throughout the profession's history, are the foundation of social work's unique purpose and perspective: pay or service, social justice, dignity and worth of the person, importance of human relationships, integrity, and competence. In the school setting, my job in a nutshell is to remove barriers to student learning so that students may achieve at their highest potential. My primary work, and the primary work of all of us in the district, is to create spaces in which students feel safe, valued, and experience a sense of belonging. In doing so, students may access their higher brain functioning in order to learn. When students are ridiculed or demeaned, safety does not exist. When students are unsafe, they cannot learn. I acknowledge the board for creating a resolution that stresses the importance of keeping students safe from hate. As we build in our students the social emotional capacities of respect, compassion, acceptance, and inclusion, let us remember that these are capacities many adults are still learning, as evidenced by the words hurled at students at the OHS football event. A common greeting in the Zulu tribe of South Africa is "Sa wubona." It literally means "I see you." More than words of politeness, though, "Sa wubona" carries the importance of recognizing the worth and dignity of each person. This resolution says "Sa wubona" to our students who don't get to enjoy the comfort of being centered, so to speak. It says you were important to us, and we value you. Let these be the first words in bringing us all toward the center of our most compassionate and kind selves.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Ali Braswell.
Good evening. It's been a long while since I've spoken here. And quite frankly, after we got the Confederate flag banned and equity became a focus in the district, I didn't think I would need to return. But alas, evil never dies, and it has raised its degenerate head again in Orange County. We have a black lieutenant governor who supports white supremacists, and now our white oppressors want to rewrite history even more than it's already been rewritten to erase their sins. Incredible, but brilliant at the same time. I mean, you've got to give white supremacists credit for creating systemic racism due to their fear of white genetic annihilation. The playbook has been quite effective, and it is about time that we had a white woman leading the OC School Board fighting for black folks and righteousness. I support this resolution and Hillary Mackenzie's fearlessness. You absolutely need to pass this resolution tonight. Power to the people.
Our next speaker is Allison Mahaly.
Thank you so much. I'm here to speak about the resolution. I am a constituent in the school district, and I want to thank each of you for doing this incredibly thankless work. I want to thank you for being brave and for leading in these times of unrest. It cannot be easy, and I sincerely thank you. There is a growing need for more elective officials such as yourselves to stand up and lead the way toward equity and inclusion, and to put policies and resolutions such as this one in place to stop or at least curb the incredible white supremacist resource hoarding and delusional mindset that there is scarcity. There is no scarcity. We have enough resources for all of the children. We just need to be able and willing to focus on equity. And we cannot succumb to the fear mongering that is being promoted by white, right-wing extremists who want to stop all progress on social issues. When hate shows its face, as hate has done in Orange County, we all must stand up and face it down. So thank you for standing up to face down the bullies who have shown up here today, who planned a rally outside in the name of marginalizing the most vulnerable. And I say this as someone who myself was intentionally taught to despise the LGBT community as a child. I was taught that they were against nature and against God. And I have had an entire lifetime journey and the privilege of getting to know many people who are gay, trans, queer, and asexual and non-binary. And their liberation is a lesson in humanity. And I am a better person for unlearning the lessons that I was taught in how to hate. I hope that as a community, we can invite other people into unlearning these things and into recognizing that groups like the Proud Boys are simply preying on people who are searching for community. We need to offer a broad vision of community and acceptance. And I really can't say how much I appreciate your bravery in leading the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Rains. I believe that she's virtual.
Ms. Rains, you're unmuted.
Thank you. I am a parent of two children of Orange County Schools. And it is so important that all of our children feel safe and supported in our schools and in our entire community. It's also important that our schools, and led by our school board, do everything possible to make clear that our schools are a safe place for everyone. I support the board's resolution to address the harm caused to students by incidents of hostile and racist behavior. I believe that it's an important step toward our goal to ensure that all of our children feel safe. And thank you so much to the board and to your tireless effort and your bravery to lead our community and our schools in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Valerie Ehrlich. Who is virtual?
Ehrlich, you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Hi, as a resident of Orange County and a parent of a child in the Orange County Schools, I want to thank the board for your continued service in such challenging times. I'm also grateful to the students and staff that shared their experiences in the resolution. I want to thank you for the resolution as an important and critical step toward documenting the experiences of our students and staff, as well as putting into the historical record the position of the board. I want to ask that all members of the board formally denounce the presence of white supremacists in our community. As displayed by the horrific comments and behavior tonight, it should be evident to everyone on the board that expressions of admiration and honor for people of color is not enough. What's happening in our community is not okay. The words of the students and teachers included in the resolution should be enough to move each board member to directly address these issues unequivocally and with immense urgency. I support and am thankful for the work of the board to propose and pass this resolution, and I know that the board knows the resolution is only a beginning. As explained in the resolution, there are critical ramifications of silence on issues of white supremacy for student well-being and academic outcomes. Decades of scholarship on school climate and academic outcomes have identified the importance of safe, healthy, affirming school environments on the success of student outcomes. While one could appeal to the self-interests of white nationalists and even silent white moderates by reminding them that even they stand to benefit from the positive effects of diversity in their schools, as research shows, it would be inadequate and unjust to do so. The extremely harmful and damaging comments even made tonight on Indigenous Peoples' Day and on National Coming Out Day are further proof of how insidious white supremacy is in our community. Instead, resolutions like this are the right thing to do. They are the moral imperative called for in these times. I thank the board for this first step and ask for more continued work to create safe and affirming spaces for all of our students, and especially our most marginalized students, to not only learn but to thrive so that they can create a world where resolutions like this are no longer needed. Your actions matter and are appreciated and critical to the safety of our students. I'm impressed by your courage and composure and grateful for your action. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this agenda item. And with that, I will open comments to the board. Or I will take a motion. Ms. Doyle?
Thank you, Chair Mackenzie. I would just like to say that I think it's really important that we pass this resolution because with each instance of wondering if this will be the only time that we see belligerent displays of individuals self-associating with hate groups, there's another time, and another time, and another time. And so I just think being on the fence on this issue is something we can't afford any longer.
Ms. Abelson?
I'd just like to say that hate and supremacy have no place in our schools. I'm really disgusted by the trauma that our students, staff, and families had to witness. I wanted to thank the superintendent, Mr. Abely, and Sheriff Blackwood for all their efforts to keep our students, staff, and families safe. I'd also like to call on all the citizens of Orange County to come together to ensure that our schools remain a safe place.
Thank you. Ms. Houser?
Yeah, kind of following in similar lines, I would add there is no place in our schools for hate. And I am truly sorry to every student, staff, or family member who felt threatened by recent actions of hate groups and extremists. And I too am grateful to Dr. Felder, Mr. Abely, and Sheriff Blackwood for their coordinated effort to keep our campuses safe, including tonight. I support the resolution, but I want more. I look forward to hearing more from the district about what we can do, specific actions that we can take to keep our students safe, both physically and digitally. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I wholeheartedly support this resolution, and I want to say that this behavior that we are witnessing is so unacceptable. But I applaud us. I'm not going to throw my arm out of joint petting ourselves on the back, but I applaud us for staying strong, and it's important to do that because we have work to do in Orange County Schools. And we have students that we have to work for, and we cannot let these speed bumps stop us. And I thank you for this resolution, and I certainly hope that we will pass this.
Is there more?
I would like to make a motion that we pass the resolution to address harm caused to students by incidents of hostile and racist behavior.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution unanimously passes. With that, we will go back to the RFP bid tab supplemental nursing services agenda item.
Not yet. If that's okay, can we shift those two items to the end?
Sure.
I just think the equity plan is the perfect segue given this resolution. If that's okay with everyone. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
All right.
We will welcome Dr. Keeling and Dr. Doyle for the equity plan.
Oh, we've got a larger team coming up, but I...
Before. I'm gonna stop talking now. Take it away, Dr. Fulcher.
All right, thank you so much. But first, let me say I can think of no better topic to follow the board's unanimous passing of the resolution to address harm caused to students by incidents of hostile and racist behavior than this next presentation, the presentation of the district's equity plan. The Orange County Schools Board of Education is to be applauded for its commitment to equity, as evidenced by the district's Equity and Education Policy 1030, which was approved on February 11, 2019. The board established this policy to acknowledge persistent racial intolerance, inequities, and academic disparities in our district, and to eliminate racial intolerance, other forms of intolerance, inequities of opportunity, and academic disparities in our district. Policy 1030 states, "The board shall demonstrate its commitment to equity by directing the superintendent to develop an equity plan to implement this policy. The equity plan will be reviewed annually, and performance metrics will be used to measure progress." At the last Board of Education meeting, we shared with you the five-year strategic plan that focuses on improving teaching and learning for all students. Tonight, we present to you the equity plan that's aligned to the equity emphasis of each strategic plan goal. Next slide, please. So what is equity? We hear that word often, but what is it? In its simplest terms, equity is not equality. It is not about giving each child the same thing. Why? Because what each child needs isn't always the same. Therefore, equity is about providing each child what they need to be successful. Every child gets what they need. Next slide. To further illustrate equity, equality, so on this slide, we see equality and equity. And so with regards to equality, everyone gets the same thing regardless of their need. So what do you notice here? Everyone gets a bicycle. Not only do they get a bicycle, they get the same size bicycle regardless of their size or ability. As a result, not all of the individuals can progress or move forward or be successful. In the next picture on this slide, you see equity. Here, each person is provided an appropriate bicycle based on the need of the individual, and therefore, the bicycles are not all the same. This allows each person to succeed and to make progress regardless of their beginning. Next slide. So how do we define equity? Equity means ensuring every student, regardless of their background, has the right support and... and services to succeed in school and life. And why do we need an equity policy? Well, our equity policy will help this district to promote, develop and promote a culture of high expectations, not for some students, but for all students. Identify and eliminate the lack of access to opportunities, find pathways of support, and raise the level of achievement for all students, so we can meet the needs of all Orange County students. And so while everyone can agree that Orange County Schools students deserve equal access to an excellent education, this isn't the case. As shared previously, since 2012, grades three to eight reading data and math data have been stagnant across all groups of students. Even our highest-performing students are below 80%. Next slide. When taking a deeper dive into the grades three and eight data, reading data in particular, not only has the data been stagnant for all groups of students, our students with disabilities and limited English proficiency are in the bottom 25%, while Hispanic, economically disadvantaged, and Black students have consistently scored in the bottom half. Next slide. And while the perception may not be that the need is with our aforementioned groups, students with disability, limited English proficiency, Hispanic, economically disadvantaged, and Black students, our analysis of students enrolled in advanced courses and programs indicates that our white student groups are underrepresented here as well. Further indicating that it isn't just about race or class, it is about all of our student groups and their individual needs. This is why we need an equity plan. And so here, it's an outline of those six equity goals, and I am going to take the opportunity to read them each aloud, and then staff will delve deeper into each of these equity goals. So goal, there are six. Goal one is to identify and eliminate academic disparities and inequities in access to and success in programs and opportunities. Goal two, create safe, inclusive, racially, culturally, and linguistically affirming and relevant spaces and experiences. Goal three, build the equity leadership capacity of district leaders, administrators, teachers, staff, and the Orange County School Board by developing equity-oriented leadership skills, mindsets, and knowledge. Goal four, recruit, hire, support, and retain a staff that reflect the diversity of the district and mirrors the demographics of the Orange County Schools student population. Goal five, make decisions, draft policies, and allocate and utilize resources that are aligned to the district's equity policy. Assess the racial and equity impact of decisions, policies, and resource allocations, and identify strategies to address inequities. And last but not least, goal six, engage staff, families, and the entire community in developing and cultivating and sustaining a culture of equity. As noted on this slide, the strategic plan and the equity plan are aligned, and they are in service to each other. One cannot exist without the other. So to share the district's equity plan goals, key measures, and key strategies, here are the Orange County Schools cabinet members, who will make that presentation, and I will ask the board if you can hold any questions or comments you have until the end of the presentation. And so tonight, I'd like to introduce Dr. Megan Doyle, Chief of Schools and Achievement; Dr. Kathleen Dawson, Deputy Superintendent; Joyce Hatcher, Chief of Human Capital and Organizational Development; Rhonda Raff, Chief Finance Officer; Melanie Stowe, Chief Public Information and Immunity Engagement Officer; and last but certainly not least, who has shepherded and led this work, Dr. Deana Keeling, Chief Equity Officer. Good evening, Chair. If you could all come on up, that would make the transitions move, work rather smoothly.
Come on down, team. We're the next contestants.
Come on down, the prayer on derek.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Felder. It's my pleasure to start us off, but I will not be ending it because this group of austere colleagues of mine are going to show the strength of our school system and the leadership team in our central services. Our plan for equity starts with data. Equity Goal One says that by 2026, Orange County Schools will eliminate inequities and access to opportunities, and raise the level of achievement for all students. The key measures here, and this is why I'm in front of you, are that by 2026, the performance composite will increase by 10% each year for African-American, Latino, English-language learners, economically disadvantaged, and students with disabilities. By 2026, the graduation rate will increase by 3% each year for African-American, Latino, English-language learners, economically impacted students, and students with disabilities. And you may ask, and those who are listening may ask as well, why these groups? Well, simply, it is because our data shows us that these are the groups that we need to provide different experiences for in order to have them be more successful in our system. This includes, again, our Black and Hispanic students, our economically disadvantaged students, English-language learners, and students with disabilities. This is our performance composite, as was shared last month in our board meeting, and it demonstrates the gaps in achievement that we have for those student groups. In addition, our graduation rate shows similar gaps in achievement, and as we know, graduation from high school and a high school diploma are keys to not just a successful termination of their educational career in K-12, but also the key to successful lifetime earnings and opportunities following our high school graduation. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Keeling, so she can talk about the key strategies that we'll be using to address these gaps.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I want to move the conversation about equity from an abstract concept to concrete examples. Whether or not something is relevant determines which social media groups we join, what news reports we listen to, what articles we read. When I go to the bookstore, I don't choose books on quantum physics. I'm not interested in it, and it's not relevant to what's going on in my daily life. How many parents and guardians have said to themselves, "I wasn't good at school," or have said, "School wasn't for me"? What they're really saying is, "I don't learn the way schools teach," but that doesn't mean they can't learn. In our most common model of school, we give students the information we think is important, using examples based on what we've been exposed to, tell them to give it back to us in the way we want, so that we can determine if they learned it. But what we know is that this does not work for all students. This year, our key strategy is to research evidence-based instructional models, strategies, school structures, and programs that have success eliminating achievement, access, and opportunity gaps for African-American, Latino, English-language learners, economically impacted students, and students with disabilities. This strategy is about our pedagogy. That means it's about the processes we use to produce knowledge. It's not just pushing out knowledge and beliefs into students. Instead, it's the presentation of information in such a way that students receive that information, make connections to what they already know and have been exposed to, and then take that information and ask, "What does this mean for me, for my family, for community, for my future? How do I integrate this into my world?" What research has shown is that when that process happens, gaps start to close. So what might this instruction look like? I have often said that if school was arts-based, as opposed to lecture, research, and writing-based, I wouldn't have a doctorate. I think and learn the way we teach. But if I had had to show my knowledge by drawing something, I would have been in that 80% that we consider not proficient. Take a look at this math problem. This type of math assessment may look familiar to us. You're given problems, a piece of paper and pencil, and told to show your work. As we begin to incorporate different models of instruction and assessment, we move beyond that traditional form of instruction. Now, in this picture, you see that we're starting to use visuals. We're giving students models and asking them to make visual representations. We're having them work together to build structures that bring in knowledge of how you use those fractions. But remember, what we're trying to do is open up the minds of students beyond just giving them information about fractions. And we're particularly trying to open up the minds of students who don't just learn the way that I learn and the way that we teach. So let's take this a step further. Sometimes when we teach about fractions, we use the example of kitchen measures. The assumption is that families use measurements in cooking. Culturally relevant teaching doesn't start with assumptions. It starts by understanding the culture of students and asking, "What knowledge do my students already bring to this topic?" In some cultures, cooking is a pinch of this and a dab of that, and if you use measures and recipes, that means you can't cook. Students are taught to cook by watching an elder, the elder talking them through the process, and then the student being hands-on. A culturally relevant teacher would begin by having a conversation with students about cooking and hearing about the foods they cook and how they learn to cook them. My own grandmother's family was from Poland. She taught me how to make pierogies when I was little. And when I asked her to write out the recipe, she struggled because she didn't use measures. She would say something like, "You need to add some potatoes." A culturally relevant teacher might have asked me, "How many people did your grandmother make pierogies for?" And I would say, "Well, there's eight of us in my family, but they're so good that we each eat at least three of them." The teacher may ask, "Okay, how many potatoes do you think are in each pierogi?" I would say, "Probably half a potato." And the teacher might respond, "So when your grandmother said use some potatoes, you can multiply the number of people in your family by the number of pierogies you're going to eat, and then take half of that for each potato in each pierogi." Now you're starting to get an estimate of what your grandmother meant by "some potatoes." Given the opportunity to express your knowledge on fractions, would you rather have a teacher who just has you write out calculations, one who uses visuals, or one who makes connections between fractions and homes? A culturally relevant teacher does all of this. So this year, our work is to be well-versed in these types of instructional models, strategies, school structures, and programs that open up the minds of our students to the production of knowledge. I will now turn things over to Dr. Dawson, who will present the key measure and data for Equity Goal Two.
Thank you, Dr. Keeling. No matter how successful we are in eliminating inequities and access to opportunities, without one of the most basic fundamental human needs of safety, we will never reach the level of achievement we know our students are capable of achieving. Therefore, the focus of Equity Goal Two is on inclusive environments. By 2026, our goal for Orange County Schools is to provide every student with high-quality and culturally relevant instruction and curriculum in environments that are inclusive, emotionally supportive, and free from discrimination. We will measure our success by focusing on two specific areas: out-of-school and in-school suspension rates, especially for our African-American students, and we will work to decrease this rate by 5% each year. The second key measure will focus on the sense of belonging for our students, especially in our middle and high schools. We will increase this rate from 45% to 100%. Let's take a closer look at why we are focusing on the suspension rates of our African-American students. Proportionally, our African-American students are being suspended at a much higher rate than their counterparts. While we average about 14% of our student population identifying as African-Americans, more than double that percentage of them are being suspended. We have to ask why. When we asked our students about their school experiences via the Panorama Survey last winter, this is what they said, and please note, these questions were only asked of the middle and high school students with 1,486 responses, and parents can ask for their child's responses from their school counselor. Under the sense of belonging category, 45% of the students felt they are valued members of the school community. The questions in this category included, "How well do people at your school understand you as a person?" 43% responded in the affirmative. "How connected do you feel to the adults at your school?" 35% in the affirmative. "How much respect do students in your school show you?" 50% affirmative. "How much do you matter to others at the school?" 38% of our students felt they did. This is about humanization. It is only human that we want to and need to belong, be accepted as who we are, that we feel valued, and that we are visible and matter to others. Without this need being met, our learning is impacted and most often stunted. So this is why we must make a concerted effort with key strategies on how we will meet this need for our children. In order for us to provide every student with high-quality and culturally relevant instruction and curriculum in environments that are inclusive, emotionally supportive, and free from discrimination, we must first know who our students are. We will do this by creating opportunities for the adults serving our children to learn about our children and their cultures. We will train staff on what is racially, culturally, and linguistically affirming and responsive when teaching and interacting with our students. In doing so, we can get closer at the root cause of why our African-American students are being suspended at such a high rate. We'll be better able to connect with our students, and they with us, to create an inclusive environment that makes all of us feel a stronger sense of belonging to each other and to the Orange County community. And so now I turn back to Dr. Keeling, who will share an example of how we can start this work.
The definition of equity in Policy 1030 says that we want our students to not only succeed but to thrive. I like this quote because it shows that thriving is bigger than instruction, bigger than test scores, bigger than labels, bigger than advanced courses. You can't thrive if you don't feel safe. I don't know if anyone here understands how much energy it takes to not get to be your authentic self, to have to constantly think about what you say, how you say it, how you look, to have comments being made about you because of who you are. I recently shared an article about an African-American female in advanced classes. If we just looked at her situation from the perspective of instruction and data, we would say, "She's in advanced classes." we would say, she's in advanced classes, so she's getting rigorous instruction. We're giving her support because she's getting good grades and scores. Check for us because there's a student of color in an advanced class. But the article wasn't about any of that. It was about the experience of being in that classroom environment. It was about being singled out as a representative of her entire race. It was about being treated differently by fellow classmates who think she didn't earn her seat in that classroom. And it was about the fatigue of not being able to be her authentic self. This is why creating safe, inclusive, racially, culturally, and linguistically safe environments is so important, so that our students can thrive. And I really think that everything that we heard today is an example as well as why we need this goal. I will now turn it over to Dr. Doyle.
Equity Goal Number Three is about changing our system, changing our system for school improvement, led by the leaders that we have empowered to lead our schools and to help our students lead themselves. By Goal 2026, Orange County schools will actively train and support all administrators, teachers, and staff in creating culturally-affirming and relevant classrooms and schools, and developing and promoting a culture of high expectations for all students. The key measures in this particular goal deal directly with the leadership of the school. As we think about the importance of changing our systems, our leaders are at the top of those systems and must change their practice or make adjustments in order to change our systems. The key measures are that by 2026, all school administrators will be rated as accomplished or higher on Standard One Strategic Leadership of the North Carolina School Executive Principal Evaluation Rubric. And by 2026, all district leadership will be rated as accomplished or higher on that same standard. North Carolina's school leaders are held to seven standards of professional practice. Strategic leadership is at the top of that set of standards, and it deals with creating a system of school improvement that is focused on the high achievement of every student. And I just changed the presentation. So what do we mean by equity? Based on research that's been done by IDRA, equity means ensuring that there's comparably high achievement and other student outcomes for all students, that we are providing equitable access and inclusion for all students, that we provide equitable treatment for all students, that we have the equitable opportunity for our students to learn the same high standards, and finally, we provide equitable resource opportunities, as was depicted in the picture with the bicycles. Examples of each of these really have to do with the goals that have already been listed. First, as we think about comparably high achievement, we are thinking about eliminating our achievement gaps. As we think about equitable access and inclusion, it means making sure that the classes that our students take are equally rigorous for all students and that students have access to the co-curricular activities that are going to make their experience even more rich. It means reducing racial, gender, ability, socioeconomic status disparities in our discipline practices, as indicated by our discipline data. It means providing instruction on grade level in all of our content areas. And it means providing tools for learning to every student. As we think about changing the system, this is kind of what we're talking about. In the next couple of weeks, our Board of Education will begin hearing presentations by our school leaders of their school improvement plans. Each of their school improvement plans is aligned to the district's goals. These goals, as we have presented to you over the last several weeks, also have an equity emphasis. In order for us to begin to focus our work on all student groups, we have to align the work in our schools to the achievement of all students. And that's what you see here. This work is going to be ongoing this entire school year, and it's going to take the coaching of our school leaders and the openness of our school leaders to begin changing the systems on their campuses, to think about the teams of faculty members, students, and parents that are coming together for purposes of improving the school, but ensuring that those purposes are aligned with our goals. As an example of the things that we have done to ensure that that work begins this school year, we've included the Equity Lead as a required member on the school improvement team. In addition, we're asking Equity Team members to be distributed across all of our goal teams so that they are bringing forth data and asking questions about the disparities that we see in our data and in achievement in each of these goal areas, from engaging all of our parents, from all of our student groups, to reducing teacher turnover and ensuring that the teachers that we have in our classrooms represent the diversity of our students. And obviously, as we're thinking about ensuring the high achievement of students in their reading and math classes, ensuring that gaps are being reduced because we are aiming our culturally-relevant practices at students and those groups that need more assistance to achieve their highest potential. And at this time, I will turn it back over to Dr. Keeling.
You've heard me say this before. Equity leadership takes skill, will, and knowledge. So how do we acquire the skills and knowledge to be equity-driven? And how are we held accountable? Our key strategy this year is that OCS will provide school and district leadership with professional development and support in leading equity-based school improvement and strategic planning. We have to continually ask ourselves, how is my district, department, and school better because I lead it? Are my students at an advantage because they attend our district and our schools? What makes us different than the district, the school, or the leader who is not focused on equity? Parents asked for accountability. They asked for equity to be incorporated into school improvement plans and evaluations. And Dr. Doyle has just discussed all of the ways that she is working with principals on their equity-driven school improvement plans. She talked about that alignment between our equity plan and the strategic plan, and how you will hear that same alignment in the school improvement plans in the coming board meetings. This goal also means that we, as school and district leaders, have to be held accountable for doing this work and achieving these outcomes. The great thing about the evaluation system is that it requires artifacts. It's not subjective, because subjectivity leads to inequity. So we each, from the superintendent to the cabinet, to extended cabinet, and throughout school and district leadership, have to demonstrate how we're incorporating equity into our practice. Here's an example of some of the professional development work that we're doing. Each month at leadership team meetings, we will include those skills that we will need to build and that knowledge that we will need to build. Everyone from our director level up is on a team. These are your thought partners and your accountability partners. We have weekly reflections that tie back to our leadership meeting and the skills that we'll be learning there. We have monthly cultural responsive practices that the Equity Leads and school-based Equity Teams are leading with staff. Here's an example of last week's weekly message, where I gave principals and leadership an article to read about dual language, and then had them reflect on the following questions. How do I integrate student language and cultural communication within my school improvement strategies? Language and cultural communication encompasses more than just Spanish translation. How do I incorporate increasing my knowledge of cultural communication within my personal development plan? How do I begin to acknowledge the various means of cultural communication that exists within my building in my own leadership practice? So you'll notice that the reflections tie back to school improvement, tie back to their own personal development, and translating it into practice. And Dr. Doyle follows up with principals as she's meeting with them to have these same conversations. So I will now turn it over to Ms. Hatcher to discuss Goal Four.
Thank you, Dr. Keeling. Goal Four focuses on recruitment, support, and retaining a diverse workforce. Our Equity Goal focuses by 2025, Orange County schools will actively recruit, support, and retain a diverse workforce that reflects the diversity of the district and mirrors the demographics of the Orange County school student population. Key measures to this goal is by 2026, the Orange County staff turnover rate for African-American staff and teachers will decrease by 3% each year. And the gap between the demographic makeup of the school systems, Latino and bilingual staff to the Latino and bilingual students will decrease by 4% each year. Touch the right button. Wait, okay. Okay. This slide here shows just a demographic breakdown of our students. And as you can see here, we have 2% Asian, 6% multiracial, 14% Black, 6% Hispanic, and 52% White. This slide here, as you will see, shows the staff, the school-based staff over time. And it shows the breakdown between Black, White, Hispanic, Asian, two or more races. And the data captured here is from September 15 of 2017 to present, September 15 of 2021. The data represented on this slide represents our school-based classroom teachers by race over a five-year period. As you can see, our African-American teaching population has steadily increased from 7.8% in 2017 to 10.6% in 2021. To give some context, the 10.6% of our teaching population is approximately 55 teachers across 13 schools. The online virtual academy does not have Orange County schools' teachers. In addition, you can also see that our Hispanic or Latino population has fluctuated over the course of the five years, but currently is at 3.3% of our teaching staff. Again, to give context, this is approximately 17 teachers across our 13 schools. Our classroom teacher staff reporting as two or more has also steadily increased to 3.5% over the course of the past five years. To give context, this is 18 teachers across 13 schools. This slide right here shows our licensed staff, our licensed school-based staff by race. This slide also shows that all-- this side-- this side-- this side shows that all school-based licensed population across the district for this year and gives you a comparison to our overall student population. As you know, the strategic goal is for our staff to, at a minimum, minor our student population. What you can see here is that there continues to be a mismatch between our overall student population and the demographics of our employees in school-based positions. Although there is still work to be done, the gap between the African-American student population and our licensed staff population is closing with overall the gap between the students and the school-based licensed staff being 0.69%. However, the gap is larger at the classroom teacher level at 3.9%. And this should continue to be our focus. The largest demographic mismatch is between our Hispanic student population and our licensed school-based Hispanic staff. Our Hispanic student population is approximately 25.98%. And our classroom teaching Hispanic population is at 3.28%. This continues to be a challenge to recruit Latina employees into teaching positions. Nationally, classroom teachers make up approximately 9% of the teaching workforce. And now I will turn it-- I'm sorry, no, I will not. It's not time for her yet. Also, too, I will talk about teachers of color and how this impacts our student achievement for all students. Research has shown that all students benefit from having teachers of color. Research shows that-- a report by the Learning Policy Institute reveals that when taught by teachers of color, students of color have better academic performance, improve graduation rates, and are more likely to attend college. Black students who were exposed to Black teachers by third grade are 13% more likely to enroll in college. If kids have two Black teachers by third grade, Hart says the likelihood of a college enrollment jumps to 32%. At this time, I will turn the presentation back over to Dr. Keeling so she can talk about key strategies with Goal Four.
I'm sorry, I do have a question. There's no key on that breakdown of the teachers and the student population. It's a color-coded chart, but there's not the key of which one goes to which. And the 25.2, you said Hispanic, your shows?
No, no, I'm showing it to her.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, the 25.2 that you mentioned isn't shown on the chart, so--
Is it-- is it-- and I agree-- is it the-- I assumed it was you take the demographics of this-- you have to work from the pie chart. Because what's green, what's red, what's blue, what--
Yes, that's what I'm asking. What-- yeah. Go down one more. Yeah, the licensed school--
Next one.
This one.
What do the colors mean?
What do the color codes stand for?
Okay. Get this, because I did not-- I'm sorry, I did not put this-- like I did it.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's just when you said the 25.2--
I can't hear you, Joyce.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I don't have-- I do not have the code-- the color code for this one like I did the other ones. I have to get that information.
You can do it from the pie chart, though. Like, green is white, and yellow is Latino, and red is black. Because we saw, like, 52% was white. That would be green.
Because one of the sections is district student population. You can use that, too.
I do apologize. I do have it. The blue is Asian.
Yeah, exactly. We're unfair.
Yeah, so, blue is Asian.
The red is Black.
Red is Black.
The yellow is Hispanic. The green is white. And the red is two or more. Oh, I'm sorry, orange. It looks red here. It's two or more.
Mixed race, okay.
Or multiraced.
That's correct.
Or multiracial.
I'm sorry?
What was blue?
Green?
Blue.
Blue is Asian.
Asian, okay.
Thank you, Mom. He says, "If you all will refresh, it is there." I will now turn this presentation back over to Dr. Keeling so she can talk about the key strategies of Goal Four.
This year, our key strategy is for us to assess the equity, diversity, and inclusion organizational culture and racial climate of the district and identify strategies for developing a supportive, welcoming, and inclusive work environment. We've said before that equity is a recruitment strategy. When we interview candidates, always speak to our equity policy and equity emphasis in the-- When we interview candidates, always speak to our equity policy and equity emphasis in the strategic plan. However, our neighboring districts also have an equity focus and have much more diversity of staff. So why would staff of color choose to work or stay in Orange County schools? I spoke in goal two about the experience of an African-American student in honors classes. What is the experience of our staff of color? Well, it's fairly similar. Not only do we need to assess the racial climate of the district, we also need to assess whether we have an EDI organizational culture so that when we hire equity-minded staff, regardless of their race, they need to feel supported, safe, and they need to feel like they can do the work of equity here. So I think also today, realizing everything that we heard, in addition to what we heard from our students, you also had some quotes from staff, and I think that it also speaks to the need for us to assess our culture. This time, I will turn it over to Ms. Rath to discuss equity goal five.
Good evening. Equity goal five is the equitable distribution of human, fiscal, and capital resources. By 2026, Orange County School will review policies, programs, and practices to ensure that no unfair language is present and that policies, programs, and practices align with the district's strategic goals. In doing so, human, fiscal, and capital resources can be aligned in the manner that serves every Orange County school's student. Our key measure will be the development of funding formulas that leverage resources to match the needs of every student in Orange County schools. So, an example of an equitable funding formula. As you can see in the picture depicted here, on the left, we have equality for these individuals trying to reach the fruit on the tree limb. On the right, we have a depiction of equity. This is ensuring that every student has the right support and services to succeed in school and in life. It goes beyond providing every student the same to providing each student what they need to be successful. Focusing on equity in our schools helps us identify and remove obstacles and find pathways of support so we can meet the needs of every Orange County school's student. Back to Dr. Keeling to talk about the key.
Our key strategy this year is that by 2022, we will create a structure for reporting the allocation of human, fiscal, and capital resources across the district. And district leadership will create and consistently utilize an equity impact assessment to assess the equity implications of existing and proposed policies, programs, institutional practices, and resource allocations. So what we have figured out this year as we started to work on our, the financial part of our equity audit is that we have to work on how we are reporting our allocations, and some of that is due to the systems that we have in place, is due to the way that the state gives us our funding. But we want to get to the point where we're able to look at our student demographics, we're able to look at our demographics of students in our different programs, we're able to look at our test scores and where our gaps and needs are, and be able to come up with a formula or formulas so that we're able to say that if 15% of our students are in ELL programs and we know that they're performing like at 6% proficient, then we would need a certain formula of what percentage of our funding should be going to ELL programs. But we're not at that point yet. This year, this is what we're going to be working on. We want to get to the point where we can report out in that way. The second part of this goal, our key strategy, is that we don't only need to identify and eliminate the existing inequities, we also have to make sure that we're not creating new inequities or perpetuating existing inequities. We have to get to the point where we're analyzing every decision that we make. We have to build that skill. And the only way we get there is to begin to consistently utilize an equity impact assessment that helps us to make more equitable decisions. And so we have come to our last goal, and I will now turn it over to Ms. Stowe.
Thank you. As referenced earlier by Dr. Felder, we have a strategic plan, which we presented at our last meeting, and we have an equity plan. And we mentioned at our last meeting that each strategic plan goal has an equity emphasis. And so we know that empowering our families and engaging our families is good for all students. But we also know through qualitative and quantitative data, all of our families don't come to all of our events. And all of the ways in which we engage families that work for some don't work for all. And as Dr. Keeling mentioned earlier, if a student says, "I don't, I can't do this math problem, this is hard," we don't say, "Well, you're the problem." We look for creative ways to reach that student. And likewise, we do the same for families. "Oh, you can't come at 7 o'clock tonight?" "Well, you're the problem." No, it's looking at how to make things equitable, to look at families that are, who are working, to look at families who have other barriers and how we engage them. And so this is a very important part because our liaisons, principals, the question when they say, "We had a great event." Okay, good, who didn't come? And how do we reach them? Because we know the key to academic success for all students is that their families are part of the process. Data are clear that family engagement helps student achievement. And so our key measure for our equity family engagement goal is that by 2026, because it's going to take time, we need a system or systems in place that engage the families who are and have been underrepresented. And this is by systems we've had in place and a need for us to look at those. And so we've already started this work because we know family engagement is important, whether we had the strategic plans shored up or the equity plan shored up. And so we started this work last year, a key group of staff and leadership, and we met with families in affinity spaces. And we met with families, and the question we asked was real simple. "What has been your experience with Orange County?" Not rank us, "Did you like it, what was bad?", just, "What has been your experience?" And Dr. Keeling has talked a lot and will continue to talk this evening about the importance of just listening. And so some of the feedback we received from our Hispanic families, they need, they want more bilingual staff, information in their language, not just the written form, but the spoken form as well. They want to be part of the school community, they've mentioned a lack of trust, and they said, "Please just hear us." Our Asian family themes, and here are several, I'm not going to read them all, but again, are the schools meeting the needs of our students? How can we be part of the community? It's hard if none of the teachers look like us, if the school leadership doesn't look like us. I mentioned the need for an English, an Asian language option as an elective. And then a key here in this orange text quote was, "Parents are looking to us, like, you tell us how to help you, tell us what to do, you're the expert. Tell us how to be part of this process." Our Black and African-American family themes, lack of accountability for the district for equitable outcomes, that's why we're doing this, among many other things. Experience in microaggressions, lack of representation in courses, and that includes the teachers, school leadership, the need for action, and again, a theme of not being heard. Our work is not done. There are subgroups that have been noted by Dr. Doyle and others who are not performing at the state or at the level of their white peers in Orange County. And so those subgroups will also have meetings with the appropriate staff so that we can hear from them, we can listen, and start the process of better engaging them. And as mentioned, it begins with listening. So this includes our students with disabilities, English-language learners, economically impacted, and Native American. And I do want to note, we do have groups that meet with subgroups. But the intent here is that we're meeting just to start listening and with the purpose of how do we better engage families? So it's a fresh outlook, but not that we haven't been asking along the way. And Dr. Keeling will share some examples of how we're going to do this.
So this year, our key strategy is to develop and consistently utilize a listening-for-equity protocol, to listen to and engage staff, students, families, and community who have historically been pushed to the margins in order to build trust and attune to the ways district structures impact inequitable outcomes. Given everything that we heard from our family focus groups, the common theme was that as a district, we don't listen. We need to develop the skill of listening in such a way that builds trust. That means walking away from your assumptions. It means not listening with the answer already in mind. It means accepting what you hear, even though it's hard to hear it, and even when you disagree or can't believe it because it's not your reality. And it means changing those structures that are causing the inequity. This will probably be the hardest thing we do. So I want to upfront ask for the apology of anyone who speaks Spanish, but I'm going to try my best to say this word, "Encuentro." It translates as "the act of coming together." It is based on the theory of learning situated in the process of dialogue and the potential of tightening a social bond. It goes beyond the communication of information or the collection of information towards the developing of trust and relationship building. And this is the point that we want to get to. We want to get beyond just showing test scores and get to the point where we are in a dialogue with community, with families, coming together and building together what are the strategies that we need to do. So Karen Mapp is a well-known researcher in the field of family engagement. And on the left-hand side, you will see the research-based practices that she speaks of. And on the right-hand side are some of the examples of the ways that we are beginning to do this. And so she speaks of communication, communicate, participate, recognize the role of families. And so we have been facilitating our family focus groups, we will continue to do that. And not only do we facilitate those focus groups, but we incorporate that feedback into the strategic plan, into the equity plan, into school improvement strategies. And so you notice that as we developed those goals, as we developed the strategies for this year, it goes back to what we heard from our students, what we heard from our families, what we heard from community. And then she also talks about strengthening relationships and capacity, shared decision-making, and collaborating with the community. And so today, we saw an example of how that dialogue with our Native American community on the resolution that Ms. Doyle wrote. But we've also been working with the Native American community around our culturally-inclusive practices. So I spoke earlier about each month how we're working on a different practice. And so I've already asked Ms. Vicky Jeffries, "Could I send you all of the themes for the month? And you tell me how that relates to Native American culture? How do we better incorporate your culture into each of these practices?" So we have a leadership meeting coming up this week. She's already given me some around the ways that in education we push out the culture of some of our students. And so I'm going to incorporate in some of the ways that we push out African-American, Latino. I've spoken to Ms. Blevko and the family liaisons. Help me to understand what are those ways that we have pushed out Latino culture? What are those ways we've pushed out Native American culture? And how do we begin to bring those in so that it is part of our inclusive practices? And so our last thing is our next steps. So in our, in our equity plan, it is a working document, as I've said before. We're always adding new action items, but our action items will begin to be integrated into our strategic plan. Dr. Felder showed that alignment. Next step is to get input from stakeholders. Right now, we're actively recruiting members for the Equity Task Force. I recently just extended the deadline so that I could give more people a chance if they wanted to be a part. So taking the equity plan back to the Equity Task Force to get their input. And this year, the same way that we have strategic goal teams, the Equity Task Force, my plan for them is for them to choose which of those goals they would like to work on to help us to stay accountable and to help with the action steps. We are in the process of creating an equity campaign. So tomorrow, I will actually be in Cedar Ridge High School and Orange High School. We'll be interviewing students as part of our video. Last week, we interviewed Dr. Mayer for New Hope, and we interviewed Mr. Faulkner, who is one of our Equity Warriors for last year, and they interviewed me. So, but we are going to create an equity campaign just around what, why is equity important? Why do we need this in Orange County school? What does it mean to you as a staff member, as a principal and a leader, as a student? So I'm really excited about it, I cannot wait to hear from the students for tomorrow. We also have a communication plan that's part of the equity plan. It's in the policy that says there's a communication plan. And so if you look at the action steps, you will notice that for each of those steps, there is a portion where we go back into the community and communicate out those goals and get feedback. So that's part of that communication plan. And then finally, the balanced scorecard. So in much the same way that the district strategic plan is on a cycle of accountability and progress monitoring, the equity plan will also be in there. Dr. Doyle is going to work her magic and put the equity plan in simply so that we can monitor our progress towards those goals as well. So at this time, I will open the floor to any questions for myself and the team. And I do want to thank the team for their help today and showing that this is not a Dr. Keeling plan, that this is an Orange County school's plan, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Keeling, and to all of our staff members who presented on this. It is a really exciting plan to me to see this infrastructure being built. And I am really looking forward and eager to seeing it in full practice as we move forward. We do have one public speaker, so I'm going to call on Mr. Xavier to speak now, and then I will open the floor to the board. So if Mr. Mark Xavier could be unmuted at this time?
Yes, hello?
Welcome.
Yes, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, great, thanks. So there is one thing that, I know that I only have three minutes, right? Among millions of things that I would like to mention is, let me summarize this real quickly. It's one of the things that you mentioned through the PowerPoint presentation, meaning that when you mention equitable outcome, the, I would recommend that to pay attention to that term. Sounds good, very nice word. But the problem, in my view, and in many people's view, is not the equitable outcome, but rather the equitability of resources, okay? Because at the end of the day, not all kids will have, not all children for that matter, will have the same outcome. So the equitable outcome sounds good, it's a nice word, but at the end of the day, it's really not impossible. Nothing is impossible in this world, but the probability of reaching it is highly unlikely. But rather to focusing on, because I see that the term mentioned a few times, rather to focusing on, to focus on equitability, the equity of resources. Now, if we're going to talk about the equity of resources, then we have, that's another term we have to talk about, the budget, how the budget is going to affect and how we're going to actually retain teachers and staff properly. going to actually retain teachers and staff properly to attend the objective, which is, to me, in my view, the, you know, all the kids will be able to learn, everybody would be happy, happy, would be happily ever after. So that's what, that's one of the things that I would like to mention. I only have three minutes, but thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Xavier. Okay, and with that, I will open it to the board. Mr. Atherton?
So I have a few comments. If we could go to goal number one.
What the key strategy or the measure?
The key measures. So the key measures of 10% each year in each area, I think, is way too low. If I go and just put in 5%, for example, for ESL, it will take 28 years for a passing grade. If I go in and put our Black Hispanic population at 21%, 10% per year by flat calculations, is going to take 13 years. So I think this should be some kind of sliding scale or more aggressiveness if I understand how the 10% is going to be done.
Dr. Doyle said that the wording needs to change from percentage to percent.
Okay, so a total overall. So not just 10% of the number, but 10% of the overall. So an additive. Okay, okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. That's, that's a good change. Because as I was looking through it, I was like, oh, my gosh, this is, we have to be a lot more aggressive.
We also want to make sure that it's statistically sound, right? Because there are such huge gaps. We wanted to make sure, because we did discuss that, because of course, we want our students where they're supposed to be as soon as possible. And this, you know, we take a look at, at least, so we would never stop us from gaining more than 10 percentage points. At the same time, we know statistically, to make that huge jump in gain, it's very, very difficult to do, not impossible, but it's statistically very challenging. And we did not want to set our students and our teachers up to never be able to accomplish it because it was statistically less improbable than more probable. So those were some of the considerations that we were taking into, you know, our discussion and trying to set what was achievable.
And that, that makes a lot more sense. The other question I'll ask, and then I'll wish, is we started an equity audit last year. Not heard the results of it. So is there an expectation where we can see the results?
So what's today's date? The 20th and the 29th? I think I said it in a board weekly update. The millennial group is coming to Orange County Schools to do their observations. We've given them the first part of it, which is the desk audit, but the second part is for them to do interviews, for them to hold focus groups, and for them to do classroom observations. And at that point, they will then be able to write up the whole assessment for us.
Is there currently a draft version of that report?
No, they don't have a report until they have everything. Yeah, until they get everything together.
All right, thank you.
Can I, can I just, I couldn't quite hear Dr. Keeling. Did you say that they already have, did they already do the desk audit? What did you, I missed the timeline part.
Yeah, I said, so I've given them all of the information for the desk audit part of it, but now in two weeks, they will be here to do the interviews, the focus groups, and the classroom observations. They put that together with the desk audit information to write a full report for us. So that the desk audit is just that quantitative, it doesn't really get at the root causes. It's when they start observing and having conversations with teachers, with students, with district leadership, that's when they can make a better understanding of what we're seeing quantitatively and qualitatively and perception-wise.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Smiley, then Ms. Howser?
So first, I just wanted to say, it's really great to be able to start seeing the building blocks starting to come together. So having the strategic plan last time, and then this layered on top of it, and the synergies there and the thoughtfulness, and to see you all coming together as a team. And I know that it isn't, it's not easy times to insist on equity and excellence for all children, and I thank you for your very hard work. I know we have staff working very, very hard in the schools right now, and I thank you all for all of the hard work that you're doing. I have a couple of comments and then a question. One, I am very, very glad to see that we're focusing on belonging. I've talked about that before. I think that is massive for student outcomes, academic outcomes, as well as just general well-being. The goals in HR, especially around staff hiring, are very ambitious and clearly would be at a different trajectory than what we've managed to accomplish in the past, so I'm grateful to see that. I would really like to see us make real progress on a systemically equitable formula for resource allocation as part of the budgeting process this year. I understand it sounds like that isn't going to be a goal for this year, and it's going to be more about understanding current resource allocation and having sort of a way to report that. But I would love to see us make progress on that sort of plan for resource allocation this year. And, you know, the success or failure of this, like, it is all about the action in the classroom, what is actually happening, and how all of this ultimately gets implemented. And the, you know, are we establishing the kind of culture of, that Karen Chenoweth talked about, about like, your kids are doing better than my kids? Like, what are you doing? Like, there's so much of that actual, like, life of a school that's going to influence whether this is successful. And so I would just urge you all, stay as close as you can to that action, like, to what teachers and students are experiencing. I think you will learn so much from how this is all actually going and whether it's actually the training and the thoughtfulness and all of these things are actually impacting things, and if they're not, why not? My biggest thing, you know, on goal one, I have a clarifying question, but I just, I want to get back to what I shared in the last meeting, which is, you know, I would really love to see some measure here that directly gets at our ability to raise the level of achievement for every student, and whether we're doing that for every student every year. So some sort of growth or progress measure of our students who are behind, what percentage of them are on a trajectory to catch up or not? 95% of them, 50% of them? Because I think these numbers are important, but I think that all of our students, what we're accomplishing for them, when you go back to the, our, how is equity defined? Why is equity important? Our policy helps us raise the level of achievement for all students. I just would really like us to keep looking at whether there's some sort of a growth really focused on. And then my only, there's a lot of comments. My only question is a clarifying one, which is on this slide, this by 2026, does this mean by 2026, we'll get to the point where we're increasing 10 percentage points a year? Or is our goal to increase 10 percentage points a year, starting with this year? Every, each year? Okay, so I would, I would suggest rephrasing that to make that clearer and, because I think it could be interpreted either way. But thank you all for all of your work on this.
Ms. Howser?
I'll say that I really appreciate the work, and I appreciate how the pieces are coming together, but I am really mad. And I'm really mad because 80% of our Black, Brown, and economically disadvantaged children are not proficient. And so what do we tell those parents? Because maybe in five years, if your kid's in the 10% that catches up, maybe they'll be proficient. But the rest of them, it doesn't. So I don't, I am not getting a sense that there is urgency in this plan to make the change that we need, and it's very upsetting to me. I think you have the pieces. I think bringing the two, you know, I heard equity in the strategic plan, these plans are really the same, they need to be one plan. And I heard last time that we were going to take the school improvement plans by year and create our first-year goals for that. And these equity goals need to be in that. And so I beg you to please do that, and I beg you for a baseline of the metrics. Where are we? We have no idea where we are today in each school, in each one of these categories. And once we baseline those measures, we may be able to do what Sarah's talking about, what Ms. Smiley's talking about, where you can start to say, are there some big opportunities to make a difference quickly? But we've got to get the data, and we've got to get the metrics. The other thing that's missing for me is, I would expect to see actions for our Spanish families that's different than actions for our Black families, and that's different for actions for economically disadvantaged students, if you will. And so when do we ever break down? Because that's, we have to be actionable. And so we need to start identifying those, and it'd be really nice to see that. And I don't know how we do it if we don't do equity-based funding now. And so I don't know, when we retained Millennium to do the equity audit, they told us they were going to help us do that. Can we accelerate that work so that this year's budget is equity-based? And if there are, is low-hanging fruit, some immediate opportunities for us to bring some equity resources into schools, let's do that now. And then, you know, to Mr. Xavier's point, it's a good one. We are really short-changed, and this is for all of this, for our strategic plan, as well as this equity plan. We're having enough trouble staffing our classrooms, let alone do scaffolding and do all this other stuff. I'm just not sure how we do all that, and, and so I'll just leave it there. But we've got to get our hands dirty in the data and see, and start to make change, because 80% of our kids are not performing.
Ms. Vice Chair Stevens, and then Ms. Doyle.
So Dr. Keeling, I think I heard you say, correct me if I'm wrong, don't you dare, just teasing, that you said that you were extending the time so that we could get more community members. Great. But I think that's very important because practicing inclusivity and transparency with our community develops trust, and we need trust in this community. Thank you for taking the time to try to broaden and include more people.
Ms. Doyle?
I wanted to say thank you for this plan. I'm really appreciative of all the work that went into this, and I'm not someone who does well with big strategic plans, they're not, like, tangible enough for me. And I just feel like it's coming together in a way that both makes sense, and I've seen it happening. So I feel like, you know, this isn't just words, this is what I've been observing in my time on the board. So I appreciate the strategic plan's alignment with the Equity Plan, and as you've already talked about, just how vital it is that that is aligned with each school's improvement team. Because, you know, if we're shifting the culture from really basically a white-dominated culture that, that tuned out difficulties and lack of belonging that many people felt, it's really hard to know how to do that tangibly. And having this woven into each school improvement team is, is tangible, is very tangible. So I really appreciate that. And I feel like another thing I've been aware of is just how important it is to respond to opportunities as they present themselves, and I've really seen that. I mean, we need to all keep doing that. It was Dr. Keeling who made the connection with Ms. Stewart last year, and if that connection hadn't been made, we wouldn't have had the training that we did, we wouldn't have had the resolution. You know, all these things are responses to opportunities. You know, if Dr. Felder hadn't been, and her team, reaching out repeatedly to the tribal council of the Okanichi, we wouldn't have attendance here. At the same time, I'm heartbroken that we had members of our tribal council here, and then we had this rude, belligerent, hateful behavior of people, once again, aligning with the white supremacist groups. So once again, I'm worried about damage done. I feel like we need to keep responding, otherwise this fragile sense of belonging that we're trying to foster can be undermined. And so it can be undermined so quickly, so we have to keep doing more. And another sort of crisis that presented an opportunity with Ms. Stowe and Ms. Blufko's leadership with the parent academies, responding to the stress and communication challenges of the pandemic. I mean, all of those things are, I really have seen the attitude of seeing crises and challenges and responding in tangible ways that have kind of become woven into the newer culture, the shifting of culture that we're trying to create. And so I just really wanted to express my appreciation for that. And again, I feel like we have to respond to tonight, and so we have more work to do again. Thanks.
Any other comments? Mr. Atherton?
Yes, and, I mean, this is the first time we've seen, this is first, and so that's fantastic to, to see it coming together. One of the other comments I had was on goal four, where we talk about actively recruiting, supporting, and retaining diverse workforce. I think one of the key measurements that I've heard, as I've talked through different teachers and staff, is a more focus on the retention, and maybe a key measurement would be a sense of belonging, as just as we have for our students, you know, saying, hey, how are you feeling here? Do you feel part of the overall community of the teachers? And I think that would be a great key measurement there. The other one, I just wanted to plus-one Ms. Smiley's point on growth, because I think that's one of the areas that we kind of just maul over, and I think it is, if we could figure out how to do it, would be a great key measurement for us to see overall, are we moving the needle, or are we just seeing portions grow, right? The ones that are already at the top versus how are we actually growing? So I plus-one that one for sure. But thank y'all for all y'all's work on this. I know this is new territory, and it's exciting, as others have mentioned, to see it going from concept to a direction.
Any final thoughts, comments? Okay, thank you all so much. Really appreciate it. I'm going to call a five-minute recess to stretch our legs. So we are going to go back to item five, the RFP bid.
Members of the board, this item was for supplemental services to support our school nurses and our school health program for COVID-19 activities. This contract includes 14 close-contact analysis individuals that are on-site. They hold some type of medical certification, as indicated. Four contact tracers to help and assist with contact tracing outside of the school with our parents and our individuals that are being close contacts or deemed close contacts. That work extends beyond the school day, so phone calls, follow-ups at nights and on the weekends with individuals who may be deemed a close contact, letting them know next steps and information these individuals would make those calls on behalf of the school nurses. And then one data analyst to work with the team as well. We had one proposal that was received from Metasource. We also did a public RFP request for proposal. We also did extended outreach to historically underutilized businesses that provide comprehensive health services. There were a number of those that were listed on the state website. And then we reached out to other agencies that may have shown an interest in the past. Again, after the submission, the proposal deadline, we just had one. We are recommending the contract move forward with Metasource for the term for the next 90 days to allow us to have this support in our schools. Questions or comments?
I knew you were going to have one.
I do, I have it all written. So one of the questions I had is, on the scope of work, I noticed that we only have 12 of the s- I noticed that we only have 12 of the schools listed. I do know, for example, our online will have in-person testing and other activities that would require them to be in person for some reason. So I was just curious why partnership and the online academy wasn't included in the original? And are they included in the bid? It doesn't look like it broke it down that way.
They are. We included partnership with this campus as well as a site where we would be providing services. We did not with the online academy, just not knowing what supports were needed over the next 90 days, but we'll be able to cover that.
So, so we'll cover it with our normal staff for, if something happened, when they come in for the, like, the ACT testing that 11th graders are required to do.
Correct. And because that number is so small, it's not where they're going to need to provide an individual onsite for those services. But we'll be able to work with them to have those services covered for the online.
Okay, and the second question I had was, this is part of a grant funding, right? This isn't coming out of our general fund or anything?
No, it is not. So we do have funding through the State Department of Health and Human Services. It was an $800,000 grant. We're proposing that that, the funding be used for this and the activities we previously discussed, which is our floating nurses and the other sports that we already have.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions? There a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. The next item, yes, here we go.
All right, so the next item is Central Elementary School Mechanical System Fire Alarm Upgrade. This is as a result of our 2016 bond referendum. We did an assessment for the mechanical systems. And there was additional work identified to be completed as part of the project. Mr. Mincy, our capital and facilities director's here as well. He may be able to answer more detailed questions. When we first looked at the original bond initiative, the project was listed as $1.6 million for mechanical. What we've learned since then, those numbers in that project from the assessments that were completed in 2014, there was an extensive amount of work that needed to be completed with the electrical systems in the school. First was the main switchgear system. That's the electrical grid coming into the school, per se. And you approved previously that project to be completed. That was necessary to do any of the mechanical work and upgrades. Part of this project includes not only the mechanical system upgrades, but we have new requirements, especially with the fire code requirements for dampers and air movement systems within the HVAC in order to meet current fire codes. So our fire alarm panels need to be upgraded on the campus. There's additional electrical work that needs to take place within the building, within the classrooms. And then also, the last item with electrical was lighting upgrades. As I explained before, in some of these mechanical projects, we're in every classroom. We're in the ceilings. We're basically demolishing in order to get to the old mechanical systems and install new equipment. We're, we're really disassembling the classroom. So it makes sense at that time to go ahead and do our electrical upgrades as well. There were several additional cost items that we identified for the water source heat pumps, and those are listed for you. Those items total $507,000. And we recommend that we brought that before you at this point in time to accept those alternatives that were on the bids, rather than coming back to you for a change order later on. We do know those are good alternatives. And it does help standardize our equipment and help us to extend across the campus as well. So we do recommend going ahead and replacing those while we have the mobilization of the contractors. We have this project ongoing. I'll ask Mr. Mincy if he's here, if he wants to add anything else to the project.
I don't, I think Patrick covered it all. But I'm happy to answer questions if you have some.
Any questions? Mr. Atherton?
So will this unit allow individual control climate in the rooms, whether it's through volume of air or actual temperature?
Okay, so this system, yes, this system does have individual control in each space.
Excellent.
Little different system than a camp.
But we're moving in the direction of allowing it in there. So the teachers have that. The second question I had is, I noticed that it's talking about the climate control master, TLV, for 10-ton unit through 15-ton unit. And the vendor that's being recommended, their cost for that is five times, or three times the cost of the other. Have a understanding of why that particular item is so much more expensive?
I believe that's the number of units of each category, how you see the cost difference.
Okay, the ones that they're specifying?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hauser?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I, I'm having, the acoustics in this room not so great for me, but, when will this work be done, completed?
So the goal, all this work will be done by return of students in the fall.
So the electrical work is actually ongoing. And then the contractor's ready to go. I mean, they've been asking us if they could get started. We've explained to them, no, we have to have approval and then we'll give them a notice to proceed. So with your approval, we would ask that you approve the contract contingent upon turning route. And because we need to make sure we have all the, all of that. It's a large contract. All of the process is complete. And so with your approval, we would just, you know, if you, that part of your motion on approval of the contract, then we'll, we'll give them that notice to proceed.
Smiley?
Well, first of all, congratulations. I'm so glad that the other bond projects came in under budget so that we can afford to still do this project. So I'm thankful for that. I was just curious if there were any elements of this? Well, A, whether there are any other bond projects we won't be doing in order to do this, I guess. And then B, are there any elements of this that sort of support energy efficiency goals?
Yes, one, one thing that's a vast improvement here is the actual switchgear for Central is original. So it is from the 50s. So there are a tremendous amount of energy loss just through that switchgear alone. The new systems obviously are incredibly efficient compared to what's existing. We use a system now with a cooling, an external cooling tower and a boiler. And the efficiencies of those are minor compared to the new heat pumps that'll be in place in the classrooms. We, what we struggle with at Central is that if you lose one part of Central, you can lose multiple parts of Central. This new system will allow you to operate by each space. So that alone will provide better efficiency. We can have much better zone control. We'll have all new, we've been currently working with Snyder for our control systems and we'll be able to remotely control things. I mean, literally, at one point, we'll be able to sit in this room and control air conditioning at Central. So some efficiencies that are coming with the system, so. Oh, yes, and humidity control. All, all the old systems are controlled by, well, they have cooling that's provided by the chillers or a cooling tower. And then your heat is provided by a boiler. And the way those systems operate, it's very inefficient to provide dehumidification for any of the cases. You get the building to a comfortable temperature for cooling, but in order to dehumidify, you need heat. And you have to run both systems concurrently in order to provide that. So these new systems that we're installing, like at Orange High School and at Cameron Park and Exeter Central, they will all allow us to do dehumidification without having to run multiple systems continually. So that also is a huge.
Your other question about projects that may not be able to be completed. We certainly know this, this project is, is needed at the level that we're recommending it. We do know we have the additional $12 million of deferred maintenance that will help cover any costs for other projects. But our goal is to maintain the identified projects from the 2016 bond referendum and to continue using bond funds and supplemental deferred maintenance to complete all of those original projects that were identified.
Just said, one thing, one thing that is incredibly different than when 2016 was here, due to COVID, North Carolina Building Code has completely changed. The percentage of fresh air that's required for any internal space has been greatly increased by the building department. We are following that guideline on this project and that's a huge reason that a lot of the costs for these air handlers that you, Mr. Atherton was just addressing the cost on, these units take a lot more fresh air. It's a necessity, as we have now discovered. So with that, that is driving cost. That is increasing cost and increased ductwork that allows that fresh air into the building. It requires fan controls that operate in different methods. It, it controls a different control module that says, hey, I need more fresh air to balance the space. So when you put all those together, it's going to continue to drive up cost on heating. And I don't know if anybody here's tried to purchase an air handling unit. They're basically, at this point, it is an incredible. So we expect the cost to continue to climb.
Thank you both so much. Any further questions or is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any other business, Dr. Felder? Then I will take a motion to adjourn.
I will. Second.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then, we're adjourned.